Yes, Mr. Alex Zdrowic.
Here.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Here.
Dr. Kahn?
Here.
Dr. Beer?
Here.
Mr. Sprague?
Here.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Here.
We are all present.
Thank you. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, all in favor. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Community comment. At this point, we have one person for community comment. Like you to keep it to around three minutes, please. So please come to, feel free to sit down and say your name and address for the record, please. Please.
Perfect.
Hi, everyone. My name is Tiffany Satsky. Do you need to spell it? I live at 6578 West River Point Drive in Franklin. The Franklin School District has long had the reputation of having strong special education programs. Many families with children with disabilities have specifically purchased a home in Franklin so that their child could attend here. However, recently, there has been a noticeable decline in quality of services for students with special needs. Tonight, I am representing district families behind me who have made numerous attempts to communicate and provide solution-focused ideas, all while following the proper channels. These efforts have fallen on deaf ears. This is not a secret and represents a systemic problem that needs to be addressed. Our concerns are significant. They include the safety of our children, which includes physical safety, medical safety, emotional safety, and behavioral safety, and the consistency of services for our kids in special education. Both of these concerns have been magnified by the revolving door of staff and the mass exodus across categorical educational assistants, or EAs. These professionals are often the unsung heroes of our schools. They are the ones to spend hours with our children, supporting them through academics, differentiating instruction, coaching them to be independent, co-regulating strong feelings, and just being present for them. Case managers rely on these staff members to take charge when they are fulfilling other responsibilities. These EAs are often the most important person our children interact with at school. The EAs in Franklin are leaving in droves for better compensation and working conditions. And those that are still here may not be far behind. When this issue has been raised to administrators, parents have been told there is no money in the budget. Yet neighboring school districts, for understate funding guidelines and with likely smaller tax bases, are able to offer a higher rate of pay, more hours per week, and often single benefits. We are requesting and following. First, we would like to be added to the next school board meeting agenda and/or schedule a private meeting open to all interested parents in order to discuss with the board and administrators our concerns in greater detail. Our children should not have to endure limited access to an appropriate education that meets their needs. We are also asking the board and administrative team to reevaluate the current staffing structure of special education department and look to minimize top-heavy positions such as special education coaches, the IT department, and any other position that has minimal student contact, and work to hire and retain EAs who work consistently with our children, which is critical for their development. The mission statement for this district reads, Franklin Public Schools implores personal success through learning experiences that focus on student needs and active partnerships with family and community. We urge you to partner with us to remedy this critical situation. Our children deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Satsky?
Yes.
We can't comment, but I will say that I would like to ask if we should contact you or who should, are you the point person is what I'd like?
Today, I am the point person, so you can start with me.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion's been made in seconded, all in favor. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Lot of teachers retiring that we're gonna miss.
Yes.
School Board calendar, regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, January 25th, 2023, at the ECC at 6:00, and a regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, February 8th, 2023, also at 6:00. Administrator update, Mrs. Benin, please.
Sure. Good evening. First, I want to thank Ms. Satsky. I hope I'm saying your name right. And the families that are here tonight, you're definitely heard, and we'll talk about what you've shared and make steps to move forward. So thank you, and to the students that are with us tonight, too. You may get bored with the remainder of the meeting, so know that we saw you and heard you, and you don't need to feel obligated to stay the whole time. But thank you for being here. I also want to introduce Darlene Peakler. She's our new administrative assistant to the board and myself. So first board meeting tonight, but it's nice for our community to be able to meet and see her in that role. It's nice to share celebrations when we are together. One that we had this week that you may have seen a picture on social media is that five of our area congregations have come together, united, to make a donation financially to the district for us to use to help families in need, whatever ways that we may see that, that may be struggling financially at this time. So we wanted to thank Southbrook Church, Faith Community Church, Root River Church, Victory of the Lamb, and Cornerstone Church of Franklin. It was really nice to have all of the gentlemen in that case that came in and got to meet them. It was also nice to talk about how if we're really supporting our community, having those connections and meeting each other and putting a name to a face is really important. We talked about how when we're faced with different situations that are difficult, which we've been faced with in our community already this year, that we need to lean on each other and have that support. And so we're excited about how that'll continue. We kind of brainstormed some ideas that day that'll continue forward. Couple of them are also in our key communicator group, which is led by our leadership in the board with internal and external stakeholders. So we look forward to continuing to work. They also work with us on our safety teams. And a couple of them provide lunches for all of our staff when we come back to school in August, which is really just another neat way that our community ties together that I've really enjoyed seeing coming into this district. Another area to focus, exciting things that happened mostly in December with our arts and education, I like to think of it, is that our fifth grade students were bussed over to the PAC. So everybody had an experience at the Performing Arts Center to be able to see happily ever before in their dress rehearsal and their production later that evening. Our fifth grade also had another trip over to the PAC to be able to have exposure to our music program. So talk a little bit about what the music program looks like, our high school program. Those students are kind of like mentors, which is really nice. They were able to play for the students. And then also, again, it just gives them that experience of seeing what the PAC looks like, kind of understanding what performances in that space can be. Some, they also have that through their concert experience, but it was nice to have the exposure to our music program. Monday and Tuesday, we welcome the end of the first semester, beginning of the second semester. We have a couple of professional development days with our staff. We're always appreciative that our community supports that time for us to grow together and learn. We are, on Monday, the teachers are really working on tying up that end of the year, or end of the semester, wow, not end of the year, end of the semester grading, especially at our secondary level. Our elementary is in a trimester. So it's a nice opportunity to explore deeper into how our students are doing, where we can maybe additionally check in with them to help them grow and close gaps and grow. On Tuesday, our professional development is really aligning with a similar format that we've used all year. So a couple hours that they'll be in their department or grade-level meetings, as a district, planning. And then we have our couple hours of gear-up time, which is new this year. I know I've talked about it a little bit. Our impact that it's having on staff continues to be positive that we're receiving through our feedback, but really they have the option to pick in two areas they want to learn and grow. It aligns with our coherence plan and the action steps in their building, but gives some choice to, I know who I am as a professional. We hire people to be amazing in the classroom. Pick an area where you know you want to continue to grow. Following that, they have accountability time. It's a word we've kind of made up, but they have a partner that they've joined with professionally this year, where they reflect together, set goals, and kind of check in between these PD days. So we're excited for that. And then personal time in their buildings in the afternoon, working with their administrative staff on whatever's more specific to school improvement plans. January also, as we saw in a lot of our building newsletters, is our time to do our map testing or check in on those bigger universal assessments with our students. It's one way we look at their progress. There's lots of informal informative check-ins through the year, which I find probably as an educator, more of the value in, but it is nice to have those bigger dipsticks to say, where are we at? And also recognize it's one way of looking at our students and one moment in time to check their progress. A couple other things coming up, our Pulse Engagement Survey for employees and students. That's checking their engagement through a series of questions that we look at and monitor a few times a year. That's coming up at the end of this month, beginning of February. We've added a question on the employee, about employee survey, about communications, or just our style of communication and how they best receive that, what works for them to make sure we're meeting their needs. And on the student survey, we've added a question on the profile of a graduate. So the boards heard some of that work. That's been a continuation this year. Shared with our leadership team this week in our leadership meeting, and now the students have an opportunity, too, to learn about it, but then also give like, what's that one word or one way that you want to learn and be ready for the world outside of K-12 when you leave Franklin? Like, what does it mean to be a graduate here? Our middle school experience visioning team continues to work and talk about what kind of adjustments are coming next year and professional development to align with our staff and answer questions that are taking place there. And I'd say that's our updates. It's been busy. At this time of year, it's exciting because we kind of turn the calendar partly to 23-24 school year, while we obviously have a lot of this school year left to celebrate with our students, too. So thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. All right, pre-AP English information. Mr. Blessington, Ms. Sunstrom, Mr. Vollo, please. And more. All right. Before we get started, I just want to introduce, I have a slide. We'll just kind of go around the table. Obviously, Bob Blessington, Director of Teaching and Learning, and I want to-
Mike Molo, High School Principal.
Anita Sunstrom, Curriculum Coordinator.
Sarah Sterben, English Teacher.
Erin Weston, English Teacher.
Okay, so as promised, I talked about, you know, traditionally in Franklin, the curriculum course, bring new courses in November, but our commitment is to bring those ongoing to you. So tonight's presentation is really an information item with the goal to come back in two weeks as an action item. And I'm going to go into detail on some of those exciting programming changes. And you've had a chance to preview in the executive summary in your board packet this week, but just wanted to re-ground us in where we are in terms of our curricular review process. And as we look at these changes in English 912, these are focused in that stage one, knowing that this is kind of a moving piece. We jump in and out of stages, but in terms of like where we are in terms of these changes in stage one, we're going to specifically talk about something that is not new to Franklin, this concept of leveling up. So this has a bit of a history in Franklin. And just to give a recap to our community and some newer board members, you know, just going through some of these bullet points here is we really have a commitment and high expectations for all of our students. So that's something that we think these course changes support that. Pre-AP, the courses that we're going to go into detail, if you've had a chance, is designed to be accessible to all students. Pre-AP courses are highly regarded by institutions of higher education, so we think about like that connection to AP courses. We see pre-AP as a very strong framework, and we've seen the fruits of our labor at the high school with, you know, some things that are already in place. Really, there's a focus on critical thinking skills that prepare our students for college and career. And then it really gives us locally an opportunity to look at like that framework. It's not a curriculum, but a framework to like meet individual district needs. So 50% of it, as a reminder, is like designed locally by the school district, and teachers are, you know, really to customize it to fit our needs. Before I hand it over, one thing I really want to talk about, how does pre-AP, how does that prepare students for AP? And we know, we know a little bit about AP, but really about their design, their back map to really help students be successful in AP courses. So there's a strong connection. On the slide there, you'll see each of those, the, on the left, you see pre-AP English 1 and 2 and the connection to the AP course. So those courses are designed to set students up for success in those AP courses. So I just want to, it may be some new learning or just a review of that about how that framework is designed to, you know, to operate.
And you may recall that this is somewhat similar to previous work we've done. In science, we adopted pre-AP curriculum, so you see those exact titles in pre-AP Biology and pre-AP Chemistry. And previously, we also leveled up our math courses and dropped the honor destinations from IM 2 and 3 in Precalc. With IM Integrated Math, when we adopted the newer integrated math curriculum in Carnegie, that was an opportunity to do that, and Precalc was last year. So our math courses all live in that sequence, then they're not leveled. So our students are in the same course, whether they were, you know, taking algebra as an eighth grader or algebra as a freshman, IM 1, right? They then are in IM 2 together regardless when they got there. And our teachers, you know, don't know who's who in terms of age unless they look at the roster, which is kind of cool.
So I know that you guys are probably curious. We have some exposure to the pre-AP framework with biology and chemistry, and we've talked about that a little bit. And one of the things that we wanted to bring forward is, yes, we are early in the implementation, honestly, of the science. We started that in 2021, '22. Is that the first year we had the pre-AP Bio? And with that work, we do already see some positive effects from that, so we wanted to highlight that. It's been a really strong framework and super flexible, so we can be really responsive to student need. So a couple of things that I wanted to highlight with this is this framework really helps our teachers do kind of the really best practices that we work with them all the time on, with our continuous improvement of curriculum and with our professional development. So we have seen like our science teachers have way stronger focus and clarity around the standards and around these objectives. I sit in with these teams very often, as does the high school admin, and we've seen an increase in like the rigor of the lessons in just the daily practice for our students as they've been learning. And again, we're a couple of years into the work, but we have been able to see some improved proficiency and how students are learning the science standards. So this is measured by, our science rubrics are aligned to our science standards. And then as teachers are assessing, we have like our FHS grades to be able to look at. So I kind of share the overview. Highlighted in green is obviously like the percentage of grades that we're showing that like proficiency or above. So on our rubrics, earning a 3 or a 4 correlates to being proficient in that standard. And then as the students earn a grade, that's like, you know, averaged of all these different standard scores they earned across that. So kind of in combination with increased rigor and increased focus on these standards and the framework that pre-AP provides is really strong toward this and has helped the teachers be able to focus their attention on that. We can see that like students' success toward these standards is improving. So the biology proficiency, you know, going from 48% before, we went to pre-AP to 62% since then. And then again, when we leveled up with pre-AP chemistry, you can see there's also subsequent improvement so far in like the proficiency that students are learning. It's pretty cool, especially because this is early in implementation. So our teachers will just continue to get stronger as they get a chance to kind of dig into that. Yeah.
Ms. Sunstrom, are those the same rubrics?
Yes, so we've always asked them to assess off of the, they've always assessed off the science practices. So science standards are unique and they have discipline, they're kind of intertwined.
It's literally the same set of rubrics.
So like this is off the same standards, yeah.
Thank you.
So when you say, you know, increased rigor, what does that mean or look like? How would I know?
So, yeah, awesome. Thank you for asking. So what's really cool with this framework is they articulate like what are the goals? And like Mike said, it is aligned to be grade level and set kids up for success. 50% of the lessons that the teachers are working with are called like model lessons from pre-AP or from College Board. And so these model lessons are a way for teachers to see, like they were designed by, say, chemistry teachers across the country that were in a committee and like developed lessons that would help any teacher who's teaching the pre-AP kind of see, this is what it could look like. If you're teaching at this grade level, this is what your lessons look like. So it would be accurate to say when we first got the resources, our teams had to acknowledge that the lessons were maybe more rigorous than what site created had naturally become. So we, a lot of our work was in combination at looking at the model lessons that pre-AP provides and our standards. I got to be present in the room while the teams would say, hey, let's go back to some of our site-created stuff, revisit what the standards look like, and see if we can like essentially make this a bigger challenge and improvement with work for the kids. So truly, like the lessons have become essentially more aligned to the standards and even more challenging. But the other cool thing with pre-AP is, in addition to providing examples, so that teachers can look and see many examples, you know, 50% of the lessons exampled out. They often provide more examples at the beginning of the framework, like that builds the teacher's confidence. So maybe like 50% of the lessons are provided, but I know like in biology, 70% of the lessons are provided for Unit 1, and it kind of tapers off because they're starting to get into the groove of what that could look like. They also, pre-AP puts a high priority on some of the same teaching and learning practices that we're teaching through professional development and through curriculum continuous improvement. So pre-AP and College Board call these things shared principles, but they're truly just descriptors of good teaching practices. And they put a really strong focus on like academic conversation and close observation and analysis and evidence-based writing. And those pieces also allow you to really dig deeper. A lot of research around what's good quality teaching and learning encourages that kind of thing, so you can have kids like engaged in and like doing more difficult work when they're working collaboratively and when they're doing those pieces. So, I mean, it's been fun to see the team tackle something that's a challenge like this, rise to the challenge. Like, there's still so much flexibility with like the team being able to respond to what they need to with our students and the expertise that they already bring. Every high school teacher is certified in these things. You have a lot of expertise. So having that partnership has been cool. And, you know, we can go in the classrooms and kind of see that the kids are engaged in this like collaborative learning, which is very important. I don't know if that answers your thoughts, but it's kind of cool.
But you also say it's flexible, I guess. Where's the flexibility coming? Because it sounds like you expect them to do more or higher level, but yet not all students-
So I guess what we're saying is it, if you're doing some of these like really high-quality teaching and learning practices and you're putting a focus on that, as the teacher's confidence and skill grows with that, we do see more and more kids being successful, even though it's becoming more challenging because the combination of the high-quality teaching practices that are not only coming through our own efforts, but through the encouragement and the PD that's provided by the pre-AP actually allows us to reach more of the students. And like our early evidence says, we are doing that. So like it, it's a really strong framework and it's super flexible because it's, it's literally not called a curriculum. It is called a framework. It says like, here's the goals. It provides these model lessons. But a typical curriculum will actually provide all the lessons. And then you as a teacher like kind of build in the responsive time. This one is saying you will have to develop some of your own lessons. We're not going to give you all the model lessons. So at the secondary level, that can be a nice mix for like the expertise that the teachers are already bringing in and just the ability to know our students. Like, and know maybe they're coming in and this is an area we're going to spend a little bit more time on. And there is that space in the building out of it.
Mrs. Sunstrom, how is this pre-AP 1 and 2 going to, is it going to help students with the ACT scores and also with the map testing? Because as you know, map testing, ACT scores are standardized tests, you know, where we can show off exactly how proficient the students are and all that stuff. So do you think it's going to have an effect on that, too?
I definitely hope it has a positive effect. I think like it's very high quality. This is something that, like when we talk to college admissions, like the pre-AP has a meaning because it's connected to the College Board, and so they're very familiar with that. When we accept something like that and say that, well, like every teacher attests to doing this process, we're all committed to that, it's designed to have kids be that college and career-ready and to be prepared should they choose to do an AP class. So, I mean, it's focused on the kind of skills and the growth that we want to see. So like at the high school, obviously in 11th grade, they'll take the ACT, you know, and you can kind of see that result. And they take the pre-ACT as their check along the way.
I think, you know, a targeted goal with this work is we would want to increase our AP course participation, all of our courses, because it provides access in terms of, from an equity lens, this is like the right work and it gives, it doesn't shut doors down to students. And it's kind of the best of both worlds in my eyes. And, you know, one of the goals along with improved like assessment scores in AP would be increased access, quite honestly.
Have you seen increased enrollment in the AP classes that those two courses lead up to?
I haven't. We can pull that data together unless you have something anecdotal. We can pull that, we definitely can pull that together for you.
I only have it off the top of my head that I would quote. I know, for example, I have an advisor who's taking AP Bio next year.
That's good.
As a sophomore, which, you know, there's no such comment. But is in pre-AP Bio this year. So the idea of conceiving themselves in those experiences and not thinking it's something they can't do, oftentimes that piece. Right now, there's no walls that, you know, physically say they can't, but there's things and perceptions where, you know, people don't believe they can because of, you know, things they put on themselves or they thought had been put on them sometimes, you know. So kids will do well if they can. In this case, you know, yes, we believe this will impact those standardized scores. Our first cohort who went through AP CAM will take the ACT this year. You know, it's likely we'll have that first group go through there. And again, like access for AP tests or AP classes, we would also correlate, that's one of those college-ready indicators. So taking an AP class, getting, you know, passing grade in that, and then taking an exam, even more icing on the cake to get those students that credit for college. But that's one of those huge, you know, college indicators that if you check enough of those off, you know, like are as important as the ACT composite score is for a college-bound, you know, high school student.
And then you saw this in your packet, but this is just our overview. Where we are right now, if we were able to do these two classes, our course sequence would look like this. To be honest, we are like we've mentioned in the process, like stage 3, 4 and 1 and curriculum review. Our goal isn't that we would only have AP classes available at the 11th and 12th grade. We would still have other classes available for student interest and need there. And obviously, this would be kind of like our overview flexibility still is there. We still have lots of English electives as well.
And then in terms of implementation, this would be phased in. Knowing the amount of planning and intentional planning, part of the reason why we're coming to you now is, and come back in two weeks for approval consideration, is that we want to have like a year and a half plus of planning for this. So this would phase in over a couple of years, beginning with the 2024-25 school year. Just knowing, again, the amount of planning that we want to do, and then that would phase in by '25, '26. Then you can see the courses it would result in removal of. But that is, that is our plan, and I wanted to, you know, whether there's some questions, wanted to open up to additional questions that you may have.
So this, are teachers like certified in these pre-AP methods or whatever?
There is a training that they go through, so you guys do get fancy certificates. It's a good time. But there is online training. There's also in-person training. We, as a district, would obviously work together in an ongoing way. They provide, they have like training modules as well for like- They provide, they have like training modules as well for like how to sort of calibrate around what could grade level work look like, so they call it like scoring calibration. And they even have modules for like, once you're experienced, you can go through, like digging deeper and better understanding it. So there would be training and yes, like every teacher in it, just like the college board AP classes are like, they essentially complete an audit at, you know, like to teach it, you've had the training and here's your pieces, so, yeah.
So this replaces what we had before, which was generic English?
Yeah, our current classes are site-created and these two we're hoping to replace those four classes with. Go ahead.
I have a, a question. I'm, I'm, as I've stated before, I'm, I've been all for leveling up and I'm glad that the science data is, has come back the way it has. It means we're on the right path, I think. But I struggle with eliminating honors courses, corresponding honors courses. Can't those kids level up as well? Those kids that were taking honors courses, why can't they still take honors courses?
And to, to sort of play off of that, if you pull up slide nine, my concern along with that is you've delayed the ability for students to make any sort of a decision about what kind of an English experience they want to have until eleventh grade, unless you're going to propose that they can move through this more quickly, ala the integrated math curriculum. I agree with Mike. And you guys knew I was going to say that, because I say it every time I meet with you. There are some kids who, for their educational experience to be fulfilling and worthwhile for them, they need added academic rigor, and they need it as, I would say, as soon as they hit high school, if not sooner.
And just like in, you know, like, to be clear, the nine and 10 honors or not, both had to be taken before they got to AP classes, right? And one of those pieces with pre AP versus honors, you know, and I taught AP classes in my prior life and enjoyed that experience tremendously. There's no honors in terms of what it means, what it is, right? It's, it is whatever we say it is, and there's no outside knowledge of what it means, the rigor of it, what it meant. You know, honors classes could be more or less from institution to institution, so that, quite a bit different than advanced placement class. So they won't be able to advance to AP or Lang earlier, nor were they previously, they had to go through nine and 10. Some students took one honors, some both, right? Some, one or the other, some, you know, jumped in and out, but they still had to take those before they got to AP.
Right. And some of them might have chosen to have their route be, I know, I, I just struggle with this idea that because there's not a national accreditation body for what it means to be an honors class, that there hasn't been any significance for what it means to take an honors class at Franklin High School to date.
I guess another follow-up question to that would be, if you are in a, say you're in pre AP English, you know, you've got thirty ninth graders in front of you, how do you take those thirty students? Say eight or ten of them would previously have been in an honors class and are looking for that, you know, push me, push me, push me, and you've maybe got, you know, some other, like the other, like there's multiple groups in your classroom of different students of different abilities. How are you going to give every student what they need? How are you going to meet that, I need that academic rigor? And how are you going to meet that, I hate English and I'm not going to do anything? Like, how does one teacher with, say, you know, twenty-five to thirty students make that happen? And I'm not trying to say you guys aren't great teachers, I'm saying, wow, how do you do what you do?
I would say that's happening now. I teach a variety of courses, I teach the CP courses, I teach an AP course, and I have classes of CP where I have the students that need a ton of support, and I have students that could be the honors kid. And it's all about planning for that learner variability and meeting like what they need and giving them the resources that they have. They all have access to the same material, they're all seeing how they can get to that end goal, and how they get there may be a little different based on the resources that they need. But you just, just planning and learning those strategies, as Ms. Samstrom noted.
Do either of you currently teach an honors English nine or 10 course?
No, I'm AP Lang.
So I wonder what an honors nine or 10 teacher would say if, if, you know, the, if the suggestion is that they're really not doing anything different. I think what we're saying is with this pre AP, it is a really rigorous experience, and from the perspective of like, how does this look on a transcript or what will a college think, this will have more meaning to them than an honors designation, which from the perspective of a college, isn't aligned to like this piece. And so it is true that even in a class that isn't designated as honors right now, there are students reading at the college level, there are all of those pieces, and so helping a student achieve as high as they can is already, like, that is the mission, and this framework helps us get even more students, including students who are like the strongest coming in, in a really good spot.
I love the AP framework from what you've described in terms of everything you've said. I still like an honors course.
Sorry. If we bring the pre AP framework, part of the college board expectation with that is that it is not set up in a, like, it must be for all students, that is their like philosophy.
Oh, so there's no way around it, okay.
Is the goal ultimately to have every student in Franklin?
Yes.
Take not just the pre AP, but to, like, instead of having your, we're lit, so like, every student should be taking AP Lang, AP Lit?
That is not our goal, we would always have options at the eleventh and twelfth grade.
And I would say the goal is not to cut off access when they arrive at the high school, that's the primary goal, or we're, we're shutting doors like immediately as they, they, you know, certainly it's possible for them to take an AP course, but we're, we're not going to shut a door on that opportunity when they're ninth and 10th grade as they're developing.
Would you say right now, like if I say perhaps I have an eighth grade student in the district who's picking courses for next year, if my eighth grade student now picks regular level, just basic CP nine, I think is what you call it, does that mean that that student is not able to take an AP?
No.
So I don't, you're, what you just said there is like cutting off access, how do we cut off access by keeping it CP nine, CP nine honors?
It's about, you know, I talked about earlier, the, the back mapping of this and really preparing them for it, and, you know, part of, part of, part of my, our responsibility is to have really solid curricular resources in front of our teachers, so we can have a guaranteed viable curriculum. Like, the resources need to be rock solid. And, and it's not, I'm, I'm not suggesting that we don't have that now. I, I think that, I know that, the research I reviewed and everything with this, it is, it is the gold standard in terms of like a resource that we can have, it is the best of the best. And it's, from my vantage point, all of our students in our system deserve that opportunity.
And I would just add the, you know, when you think about like, why don't students, you know, like maybe see themselves in the AP world, again, there's nothing on paper that prevents students from doing that, and yet, like, evidence would suggest they don't often. And, and again, like that idea of, you know, belief in oneself and everything else, there's a lot of things that go into that perception data when we look at our persistent gaps in terms of why don't students take a college-level course when they can? And they can, certainly. So not an AP class necessarily has to be the thing, but we're, we have more things in our school that are college-level, and we don't have, you know, commiserate representation in that with all our different, you know, constituencies. And I'd also add the, your research doesn't support that kids learn better when they're separated by ability group, which is one of the other things, and that was something I didn't necessarily know twenty years ago as educator. But students actually learn better, and that goes for students who are on the higher end in terms of like, you know, testing and those things that we typically look at in terms of ability. Diverse ability actually helps everyone, not just students in one level or in one place, when they're learning together in classes. And again, that's something that's been a learning piece I've had since I left my undergrad and gone through my career, which is something that, you know, is exciting to me these last several years, we've talked about equity and leveling up is, you know, like really that's an eye-opening thing to think, well, if I put all the smartest kids there, and again, I taught an AP class where the first year I taught it, I had the thirty-nine of the forty kids by class rank in my class. By the last year I taught it, I had kids from the whole spectrum of that class, and my results were better my last year in the AP test than they were my first year. Maybe it's because I was better, but also like I, I opened up that thinking on my own to encourage every kid to take a rigorous class, and it was kind of cool.
To be honest, you know, what, at least from my personal experience, my daughter being in high school, and as a junior now, what I've seen is that having pre AP, she did pre AP bio and then did AP bio, I think that pre AP bio really prepared her to do the AP bio as a tenth grader, and she did very good. So I definitely kind of, you know, think that the pre AP, of course, not all students are going to do the AP Lang, you know, in, as junior and senior, but still, what I can see is that if they are prepared, first of all, I think personally that it's going to hurt them with their ACT testing, with their college bond. And then second thing is that also with the MAP testing, you know, improve a state report card, plus they'll have still options to not do AP Lang as junior and seniors if they just want to do pre AP one and two and then go to the, you know, whole literature option, so.
No, Dick, don't get me wrong, my concerns aren't about the curriculum. I think the curriculum itself is, is great. You've sold me that it prepares kids to do well on our, the standards, it gets more kids interested and ready and able to take AP classes, which is a great thing. I just don't like the fact that basically we've just delayed the chance for kids to make a choice about their English experience two more years.
They don't have that choice now, though.
Yeah, they do, they can choose what they take in ninth grade and in tenth grade.
I think that you were saying the honors versus non-honors.
Okay, yeah.
The choice between honors and regular?
Yeah.
Is a choice, now they just all take the same?
No, they don't all take the same.
Right now, they have a choice.
Currently, it's a choice.
With this program, it will not be a choice.
I think it's important to note that modern, high-quality literacy instruction embeds a lot of choice in how students engage with their learning. I think you guys, of course, could speak to it even more than me, but like, the, the readings that students select, the writing that they do and kind of their interaction with that still ends up being very personal and very responsive to the students. So even our idea, it, like, the way the literacy instruction works is different than when we were students, and the kids do get to like infuse themselves and sort of like their passion into it. I mean, obviously you guys, correct me if I'm saying it wrong, but like, I, I think it's like, it is, literacy is an awesome opportunity for kids to really like shine their own.
Will the rigor, will the rigor of these new classes be similar to the rigor of what was the honors class, what is the honors class now?
So it's hard for me to know exactly till we can see like the model lessons, but if the experience with the bio and the chem is anything to go by, I would anticipate that this will be very rigorous. I've been super impressed by both the bio and the chem, the resources and those goals, and my past world when I was a teacher was in science, and even starting with a really strong team like we would be with English, like we were with science, where the site-created things were already quite good, I would say this brings it up even another level. So it will probably be a little bit hard for us to fully like measure that, because the lessons would be different, but I think it will open the eyes to the team and what the kids can achieve. I'm also a little bit excited about how this could pair with the fact that we already have science going with it, because I think some of those shared principles and some of the focus will, like, kids will start seeing that transfer a little bit. And we luckily would have like onsite people who know how to navigate these things. So I, I, I think it will feel very rigorous, that's my anticipation.
What's the difference in rigor now between the class, between the honors class and the, and the regular class? Don't know what else to call it.
I don't know if there's like a rigor measurement tool that I can fully use, like...
It's the same standards.
The same, the same standards.
There's not an honors set of standards, that always helps me think about it.
Yeah.
Everybody in the state has the same standards. So honors doesn't have separate standards, but it's, they're working towards the same things.
Are they reading the same books? I mean, there's some reading books in this, isn't there?
No, I, and I don't teach honors nine, so just based on talking with honors nine teachers, text complexity could be one thing, sometimes it might just be pacing through a unit, but as Dr. Mo was suggesting, they do have the same standards that we would have in CP comp and lit analysis nine.
And the text complexity, we can deal with within one class, like Erin was saying earlier, like, we can always provide more and more complex text to kids. All right, well, the point of bringing these things to us earlier is so that we can have these conversations and that people like me can continue to ask you more and more questions offline, but, you know, one good thing about me is that I always listen to reason, so.
You do.
Well, mostly. So I'm done with questions.
But, you know, to, to, well, I just question, you know, if, for example, a student is motivated to become English teacher on the road, right? So, and if they want to challenge themselves, like coming in ninth grade itself, or they want to, or 10th grade itself, they want to do AP Lang, you know, what will be the option for them?
So the college board itself, I do not believe recommends that any ninth or 10th graders take AP Lang or Lit. I'd have to pull up their site and look at it, but they're pretty, like, when they have these AP classes, they'll often put like, here's what we recommend as the prereq, and I've nev, I'm unaware of anybody having kids take AP Lang or Lit at 10th grade level, and I'm guessing that they wouldn't recommend it. So like currently...
AP and geography is usually that first one at ninth grade, if kids take one.
Yeah.
In every place I've ever, that tends to be the earliest one of the bunch.
And they for sure can take, of course, like you said, the AP sciences, sometimes starting in 10th grade, or was it AP psych? This happens in 10th grade a lot. But it hasn't been something that's, as far as I know, happened.
Seems like there's one entry level in ninth grade, from what I read.
Right, and I'm not aware...
You don't have eighth grade students doing CP nine.
I just want to make sure that in addition to how these kids transcripts look, that what they're experiencing keeps them engaged, right? I don't want to lose people in either, in any direction, if we can, if we can help it, you know?
Yeah, and to be honest, to put this on the transcript, I mean, they have a, you can't just put pre AP without, like, that holds some weight, for like, and Mike mentioned it, like, in terms of like an honors class, that doesn't, you talk about from college admissions, it doesn't...
I get it, but it's not just about the transcript.
Of course.
Yeah.
It does sound, though, that with the ability to be flexible with the lesson planning, that you would be able to engage...
I'm willing to learn more.
Engage students at all different levels and keep them engaged, you know? If they, you get a class that has some really, maybe strange...
Does anybody have further questions?
I was, I was going to add, oh, sorry, Lynn.
Yeah, please.
So, I mean, we're buying this, right? Is that what's up? How much is it cost?
Yeah, there's a, there's a cost to the, the framework and then the, the greater, you know, the greater cost, however you want to calculate that, is the high level of, of training that, you know, our teachers will get. So as soon as we get approval, honestly, we'll, we want to get that process going right away, knowing that we want to be really diligent about that professional learning and training that our educators will need.
She wants to know the dollar amount.
I can come back with that. I don't want to tell you, yeah.
I mean, this is what we're supposed to be thinking about. These are decisions that ultimately end up in budgets, but this is what we should be aware of, what we're actually spending here.
In, in a couple of weeks, planning to come back and I, in exact summary for next time, I'm happy to include some pricing information as well, that would be helpful.
Thank you.
I just know you by this point.
It makes sense. Mike, please.
I was going to be brief for once. You know, I love words and gravity's not always my thing, but the, one of the greatest things is literacy and reading and writing and speaking, listening, is like, there's always room to grow, right? It is the challenge that our educators have, you know, within our current classes, whether it's an AP class and Erin teaches Lit and Sarah teaches Lang, or a CP class, to get every student further along. So your students who as freshmen are proficient writers, they're great, right? And they can get better, right? I mean, they're, and you don't get better by doing what you're already good at, you get better by being pushed. And we have a group of educators who can push kids, and they're doing that right now, and they're doing that every day. And some of our greatest readiness is in the English language arts areas. We look at our ACT composites in writing and in English and in reading, I mean, they're doing great work right now. So we look at this as a way to accelerate even more and, you know, not lose kids in the top in terms of experience and push them and get more students further, you know, and again, we have a great team to do it.
Yeah, it's a strong team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're going to move forward.
Are we gonna move forward? Um, if everybody wants to get uh their proposed WASB resolutions out and any questions they might have. Dr. Veer, please.
I'm sure you all had a chance to review the WASB resolutions. Compared to last year, which was my first year um sitting in that legislative session at WASB, these seem a lot more sort of perfunctory and um sort of cleaning up language type of resolutions, but I'm happy to hear if any, so nothing jumped out at me as needing a great deal of conversation, but did any of you notice anything that you would want me to speak up about in session?
I, the second resolution about voter education.
It seemed odd, didn't it? It seemed redundant.
It seems, we have civics class.
Yeah.
It seems like another one of those, hey, add this part, add this to the curriculum.
Twenty three oh two, the second.
And um.
That's the one I flagged as well. It seemed just.
It's, it seems, yes, it seems redundant, unnecessary um to me to add voter education to.
When you already have civics as listed as a goal of.
Because there's already the required civics exam that students have to pass. What more voter education would it be?
I don't know.
Without getting.
We, there's only so much, there's only so much class time.
Only hours in a day.
But it did make it through those reviews.
Yeah.
So is there anything we need to buy?
No, it's just added to the laundry list.
And they've literally added voter education too.
Yeah, even in the rationale, it says, you know, this is responsibility of citizens. Well, isn't that part of what they're getting in their civics exam as well, like?
Okay.
Oh.
I mean, I don't feel terribly strongly about it one way or the other, um, but it, no, we'll see. That would be something good to talk about.
Yeah.
Anything else?
It also seems like one of those things that's.
Someone's pet project.
Somebody's pet project and it is unlikely to make it very far at the legislative level.
I'll let you know.
Not that.
Oh, I thought you meant at WASB. You mean at the state level?
At the state level.
Yeah, probably not. Anything else? If you think of anything, um, I think that the first session is, I don't remember, Thursday? I haven't even looked at the schedule for next week, Wednesday.
I I do, I I am, um, I do like twenty three oh six and and the parent contracts for private school transportation.
Yeah, that made sense.
It makes total sense.
Yeah.
We shouldn't pay.
Per child in the car.
Per child in the car when they're making one trip.
Thanks for being the representative, Angie.
Happy to do it.
Does anybody else have any? Anything that they didn't? That they'd like to talk about with these resolutions?
See a lot of excitement.
Well, I guess. Universe of preschool meals, we're all on board with that.
I'm sorry, Linda.
I think it was calling for state funding to supplement federal funding to provide uh make sure that meals were covered for kids who fall into the free and reduced lunch program for everybody.
All students regardless of family income. That's what's it.
Oh.
But the state would pay for it, so I guess.
Guess I'd rather the state pay for it.
I would sooner they paid more for special education, truthfully.
Yeah. Andy, you were nodding, so you noted that? You just had read it or?
I was just making sure that.
You understood it.
Thank you, Linda.
Well, I don't think that's would be our priority, but.
I don't think so either. I agree with you, Linda.
Which resolution number was that?
That's another one that wouldn't get very far.
Twenty three fifteen.
Okay.
I agree.
I wonder if this kind of kind of discussion will be on that.
It'll be interesting. I'll take notes.
Is it long? No, there's no Facebook Live on that, is there?
Well, they did a Zoom version, but it wasn't Facebook Live. They had sort of like a hybrid meeting last year. So I don't know.
What is it this year?
I think it's just all live and in person.
All right, anybody else? All right, thank you. Community Education and Recreation Building, Mr. Cromie and Mr. Anderson, please.
So thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Anderson's coming up. As you'll recall, at the September board meeting, uh, Mr. Anderson did the community ed and rec overview. At that time, there was some discussion regarding um facility usage, the amount of facility space and and or lack thereof of of ability to do all of the programming really specifically with preschool age children um and then post-school age children. So really taking out kind of that four to eighteen range as those students are attending school and trying to eliminate as many people in the building that aren't affiliated with our four to eighteen year age year old age um and teachers in the building. So kind of providing as much safety as we can, so moving that programming out. At that particular time, um, the board had directed uh Mr. Stumble, myself and Mr. Anderson to take a deeper look into what would it look like if we provided some um community ed and rec specific space? Um, in order to achieve that, um, the three of us met with PRA, the architecture firm who had done the middle school and has done some other projects or really some other understanding of facility needs in in the school district. At that meeting, uh, Mr. Anderson described the current the the current use of facilities and what he would envision for um kind of longer term use and part of our discussion in September was around planning for not just today, but what does it look like five to 10 years from now? So we met with them. Ultimately, they came up with a floor plan, um, same floor plan you see here, same floor plan that was provided throughout. So you can see this is our current ECC um space over here. Some of this is ECC as well, but we would convert this wall here or or butt up to the what would be the west wall over here and build out moving from there. In order to really achieve a non generic, talking to a constructor, construction company who says we do this for $350 a square foot, but to really understand with a little bit more depth of what it's going to take, um, we worked with a consultant, Michael Hacker of Cadence Consulting, who has done this with multiple school districts. Um, and ultimately, we sent out an RFQ, so a request for qualifications. So we weren't looking for official bids. We haven't been tasked with an official bid yet. But we needed to be able to get something stronger than $350 per square foot without really knowing anything about it. So ultimately, um, PRA developed this floor plan. They provided a potential facility rendering, so when you look at this, it's clearly hand drawn, right? So um an architect with some artist background was able to draw this because it would look way better than I did, but a rendering, we provided a materials list as well, so I'm not gonna uh pull that up. And that materials list is really based off of typically how we build facilities in Franklin and the types of things we put in from carpeting to typical tile that we put in to potential brickwork or um the framework. So it's not an exhaustive list, but it's trying to follow as many standards as we can so that they have an idea of what we would ask to be put in in it. And then the last would be a site plan, so this is taking all of the land west of this particular building, so you can see the current ECC here, the potential addition. So all of that land and how could we grade some of that out to provide green space as well? So they saw those four particular things. We asked them to come up with estimated costs in five to six categories and um submit their proposals. So these are not bids, they're simply estimates being provided by construction companies. Ultimately, what we told the construction companies that bid, there were six of them, you've heard many of their names before. Six companies provided estimates to us. We explained to them, we're simply looking for the qualifications to build our facility and to build it like we would like to be built. The pricing that you provide is not a hard and fast. We're certainly not holding you to that and it would not exclude you from bidding it should we go out and really request a bid. Those numbers came back, when we look at the aggregates, somewhere around 4.3 to seven and a half million dollars. So there's a wide range. But we would really be looking at a budget of about five to six million dollars if we were to do this project and um provide that floor plan or as close to that floor plan as possible. That five to six million dollars, even with that spread of numbers was generated in working with uh Michael Hacker, who's been again in this industry for a long period of time and really taking a look at those estimates that are provided and whittling it down to where we think we could potentially get bids to come in. The other key component, um, when doing things like this in the construction world is you work with the architecture firm who designs then the facility, like the specifics of the facility to get that target amount or those bids to come in at that target amount. Right, so if we were to say the floor has to be marble, obviously, it's going to come in much higher. But if we back that off and say we would like to use tile, these are the types of tiles that we use and we put that spec into the bid, that will come in cheaper. Or we decide, you know what, we don't need four restroom stalls in each of the men's and the women's, we're gonna go with two, that's gonna come in cheaper. So you it's called design building, but you do some design changes to the building in order to get it to come in or approximately where you believe it's going to come in. So we were able to, or really working with him, come in with that five to six million dollar estimate for that particular piece alone. And again, should the board give us approval tonight at any dollar and say, nope, we need it at four and a half, we can work with them. It probably won't look exactly as it looks on the floor plan. Or certainly the drawing or the rendering that's there, but we could do that. So we would work with them to make that happen. Part of what I had asked Mr. Anderson to prepare was a potential um idea of what we would immediately put into it. So if this were constructed, if you took a look at the timeline, we really wouldn't be looking until 2025 for completion. And some of that is simply we're looking at a four month timeframe for the DNR to do a wetland delineation. Right there, we can't circumvent their timeline. I don't know how long it takes to get from one side of the desk to the other, but we're told about four months. But in any case, um, in taking a look at the studios, Mr. Anderson went through and put some highlighted things that he'd like to run in here. I know there was a question about pickleball, so we'd have to look at the absolute size and height to see if we could get that in there. But ultimately, um, uh, Mr. Anderson would have things ready to go right now and ultimately then be going out and working with some of our community members and then working with other community members as what they see for their below four age and they're above eighteen age kind of programming that they're they're adding and finding success with, and ultimately, we would look to then implement as many of those things as we could in this space as well. So that's the community ed and rec piece. Um, one other addition I would just like to note, so um, this was really it 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 was more because this uh construction piece was being added, but we asked our uh in the RFQ to bid an alternate. So an alternate is something where they are required to bid on it, but we do not have to select it. So for instance, when they, if they were to bid on the recreation and community center and they provide a bid to us, we don't go and change the roof because we like, we want a different roof post bid. That is called a change order, which we can do, but it's automatically costed in. An alternate would be they provide bid A, they provide bid B. We can select bid B, but we have to select bid A in order to do that. Bid B would be the health clinic I'll talk about in a moment. We can't just say, oh, we'll take bid B and we're done with it. A has to come, then you can take B, but you don't have to take B. Does that, does that part make sense?
Yes.
So you bid it as an alternate, asking them to provide an absolute cost and then you decide whether you want to add that to the building or not. So as part of our discussion, I thought, hey, we're putting this in. I would love to see what a clinic would look like on the site for our employees, families on the health plans or all dependents on the health plan and our employees who are not on the health plan. So not all families of those employees, but our employees who are not on the health plan. Part of it is I've been part of two clinics already, um, very successful clinics in both Oak Creek and in West Alice, West Milwaukee and have seen great things for our employees. And and we all know a healthy employee standing in front of our students is going to be the best chance of a high quality education for them. So if we can provide convenience, typically I've made them free, so ultimately, if we can provide that portion as well, we provide convenience, we provide it free and we provide a high quality clinician, we can eliminate some of the acute things that come up, certainly a sore throat and determining whether that's strep throat or not to some maintenance of high blood pressure or diabetes and prevent some of those long-term issues that can potentially come to simply from adherence to medication. So I asked to have this piece added in here. Um, again, it's an alternate, at least even it was an alternate request to provide some cost to it as well. It would certainly be bid as an alternate. Should the board say, yep, I think we should take a deeper look into this one tonight as well? While that would be going out to bid, we would be working with our healthcare consultant then what, who would we like to come in and manage it? Because we don't manage it. We hire a company, they manage it top to bottom. I don't want to be involved in anything related to HIPAA. I have no interest in that whatsoever. I simply want to know that it's available and we'll pay the check to do that. As a side note today, and this was not ready for the board meeting, but we had, um, Ms. Lang Court and I had a meeting with our healthcare consultants. Last year alone, we paid 7.7 million total in healthcare. I'm sorry?
This, the agenda item is not on healthcare. The agenda item has nothing to do with, he's talking about the healthcare plan. We're not, it's not the agenda item. It's on the the building.
But the healthcare, the possibility of adding a health clinic would be related to the overall cost of healthcare to the district.
The agenda item doesn't even mention healthcare. Why are we talking about it?
Because the building project.
He wasn't asked to add, to bring us a clinic building. We didn't ask him for that. It's not on the agenda. He could certainly bring it back on another item, but we're not talking about the health insurance plan or what we want to do and how to change it. That wasn't on the agenda.
It it actually is on the agenda.
Where? Probably, it says community ed and rec facility update.
And he explained that there were two possible.
I, okay, I heard about the the clinic being an alternate. Okay, I think we're done. I think you were going into how you were talking to somebody else about talking, you know, what our experience has been on our health plan. That's not part of the building.
I think having a clinic onsite would impact the financial um aspect of our healthcare. And so the the benefit to having an onsite clinic would be reflected in the total overall cost of our healthcare. I think that's how it connects.
I understand how it connects, but it's only being discussed now as an alternative to be bid with this building. That's the end of the discussion. I think we're going to be launching into our healthcare costs are over the, you know, going this high, we need to do something.
No, I think Linda, that.
It's not to justify the addition of the clinic building at this meeting. The public would have no awareness that we would be discussing this.
Okay, can I um offer a a suggestion just in relation to this agenda item? Much as uh our curriculum things that have been coming to us, like the pre AP tonight, came to us tonight for a discussion. We asked a lot of questions, you know, all of that, and they're going to come back in two weeks and we're going to have an action item then. Is it possible to change this agenda item tonight to not be action and we could do a similar thing? We could have a full discussion tonight. We can talk about it without the pressure of by the end of the night, we must act on this and then have a couple of weeks and come back and make it an action item in two weeks.
I would certainly appreciate that.
Okay.
I think that's why I would be going.
Do we need to take a vote on that or how, I don't know what the rules are, but.
I I wouldn't, I.
I mean, there's no way it says action item on it, other than.
It says it's an action item in the agenda.
Well, we can take action to defer the action as an action.
Okay, um, as I think this was a, what Mr. Cromie was going to mention was was something that would be informational that he had a meeting about today. I don't think it, I don't think it um affects, I don't think it affects whether we build this building or not.
Well, if it doesn't, then why would we be talking about it?
I just wonder, our experience with curriculum items, and I'm just gonna phrase it that way, was that we had things come to us that were like, oh, we have to do action tonight, and then we asked for in the future, can we have like information one meeting and action in two meeting, you know, the next meeting or whenever. It seems like this is a lot to digest and it's, I I'm excited to talk about it, but I feel like we might be in a better place if we could talk about it all tonight and then come back and vote on it in two weeks. And much to your point, Linda, where you just said the public wouldn't know, it, you know, it could be on the agenda. you know, it could be on the agenda, anybody here wants, you know what I mean? I just, I feel like we could delay our action on it until next week, or two weeks from now.
But I do think that because the rendering we were given, which wasn't a surprise to any of us tonight, does include a potential health space as an add-on.
Only as an alternate bid. Only as an alternate bid.
Linda, it seems like that information about the purpose for having that included in the rendering might be helpful to our discussion. So I might ask a lot of questions about that, which then he might answer as to why he chose. Why did you choose to ask for a rendering of a clinic in the drawing? Mr. Cromie?
Would you like me to answer that?
Please.
Yes, please.
Well, I don't know when it's my turn yet. So, so I knew our healthcare had been trending high. So we're self-funded, right? We've been self-funded since 7/1 of 2021. The idea of self-funding is that you can help smooth out typical healthcare costs increase, which rise in the state of Wisconsin around 10% to 12%. So our self-funded health plan is escalating at that 10% to 12%. And with our consultant today, last year, I'm just using last year's numbers, we paid 7.7 million dollars in healthcare. If we were to go out and be fully insured and bid that today, he said we probably made about 22%. So 22% is around 1.75 million dollars, which is real money, right? That's an extra 1.75 over 7.7 going out the door to pay for health. So the idea that something has to be modified within our health plan, whether that's plan changes, or it's something in addition to the offerings we're provided, is really where I went with the health clinic. Now, those numbers brought to you today, right? We discussed those today. But I track healthcare, so I had been tracking it from the data they gave me from 7/1/2021, and had a pretty good idea of where we were going to show up anyways. And having had success with clinics in the past and helping to use that to mitigate healthcare costs while keeping staff in front of our kids was the reason why I added or asked to even see what it would look like, or how would we fit it into this particular project.
I too was a bit surprised to see this on the rendering, just because it wasn't something that, you know, hadn't even been in the ether as far as we were aware. So I guess I would have a lot of questions about, other than it felt successful to have a clinic onsite, and that certainly is something that would be a sort of a, just like a soft benefit, and a real benefit to staff, right? That's an attractive thing. I guess I'd want to see how that, you know, employing an additional staff member, probably a nurse, a front desk person, how that actually plays out in terms of cost benefit.
So I certainly wouldn't have numbers for Frank, it would take us...
That's why I like Mrs. Sapursky's suggestion.
It would take us several months to vet that out with our healthcare consultant to do that. I'm not saying that that's not necessarily the avenue. What I can tell you in both instances, it's been highly successful. In Oak Creek, in five years of self-funding, we kept that a 2% increase on a yearly basis, and those, while banking 33% of our healthcare costs for the rainy day funds. So we were at about eight to eight and a half million, we had about 2.6 to 2.8 at any given time in reserves. Health clinic was part of that, not, obviously not the whole thing, but part of that.
I have a question for you. If we, if we voted tonight to move forward, and we voted to get, for the bid process to go forward, for a bid A and a bid B from each, from each person that wants to give a bid?
Okay, I'll just ask, before we even decide, maybe, I mean, he gave us two...
Can I ask my question, please?
Maybe there's other options we should think about.
I, can I ask my question?
Okay.
Thank you. If we go forward with a bidding process, we haven't yet, but if we do, it's four and a half months to get through the process before, before anything would happen. We'd certainly have to vote, we'd certainly have to vote again when the bids come back. Would we, by that point, be able to have an idea of whether we wanted to go forward with the health clinic four months from now, or five months from now, when we're, when we're, when we're going to, I mean, there's going to be reports done, and the bids are going to come back? Would we have, I'm guessing we're doing this in this order because that there's a timeline that everything takes, and we want that, there's an end result that we, that, that, of a building in two years?
So, I'm going to answer that with two parts. So first of all, yes, we'd be able to get a ROI of what a potential health clinic would be able to do for us. That ROI might not all come in year one. It's important to note that that might be upside down in year one, and by year two, it might be right-side up and then continue forward. So it's important to note that it may be 12 months, it may not be. So, like anything that you're sticking your time into, doesn't always yield fruit in year one, right? So that's part one. Part two, should the board approve tonight, or if it's two weeks from now, or any point down the future, the cost of approving us to move forward is approximately $500,000 on the rec building, and about $41,000 for the clinic. The reason that is, is we're now going to pay the architecture firm to go out and do a full-scale drawing of every piece that's going to go in, and every location it's going to go in, which requires us to be meeting with them, spending their time, I'm not worried about our time, but spending their time, they're going to do the specs and the flooring, and all of those things, they're going to go into it. We're going to need to get a site evaluation, so the wetland delineation that you see on here is from about five years and six months ago. Unfortunately, wetland delineations are only for five years. And so that piece is, has to go out and get redone, which means now we're, that's where the DNR timeframe comes in. So we're doing that wetland delineation and paying those costs, and we're doing site surveys and soil testing, and all of those things. So those all are typically a cost of the project, so typically around 10%, when you put them in aggregate. Typical architecture fees around six and a half of that, and about three and a half would be associated with those other things. All of that would go towards the clinic as well, so while the site is already being done, the soil's already being done, wetlands, we can incorporate that all at the rec facility. But they would be drawing out the clinic and doing all of those, which is approximately $41,000. Then it would go out to bid. If the board would approve a bid, that's all absorbed in the cost, in that total cost of the bid. If it's not, if the board were to go out, or say, go out to bid, and we do all that, and we decide not to, we still have to pay for that, we just don't get the building that comes with it.
Yes, Linda, please.
Yes, I think we're kind of getting ahead on the discussion, as if we've already decided we're going to build a building? Let me, just, can we just back up a little bit? Remember that, they're bringing these building plans, because we asked them to to show us what it looked like, so we can actually discuss it, talk about it. This is the first time the board has seen any building plans, that the board has seen this. And the plan that we have in front of us costs $5.6 million. We have available $2.3 million. The past conversation on this building, over the years, has been, some building would happen when there was sufficient funds to build it. We don't have $5.6 million. So at this point, seems to be easy. We can either defer the building, build something smaller. Think about that. Then, we have administration suggesting that we raise taxes of $3.3 million over two years to fund the new building. And we're funding a new building that, up until this time, has not been known to the public. The public doesn't know we were thinking about a $5.6 million building. And this $3.00 million increase in taxes is about a 5.5% increase on top of property tax bills that are already considered to be high. Keep in mind, increments add up. I'm going to tell the story of the boiling frog, even though you might not appreciate it, but if you throw a frog into a pot of boiling water, he'll die because he won't know to jump out, or he will jump out. If you put a frog in a pot of water and just heat it up slowly, before he knows enough, it's too late. We seem to be kind of on a path here, incrementally increasing, as if that's okay. Keep in mind that future state funding is uncertain. We've heard about a potential fiscal cliff scenario. Have we not? Increasing taxes by $3.3 million for a building with ongoing operating costs and maintenance costs, it deserves community input. Maybe we should be putting an advisory referendum on the April ballot. We can do that, it'll be advisory, and then we would know if our community supports a $3.3 million increase in their taxes. It also seems that we, the school district provides recreational services with some relationship with the city. We see it in the use of fields, tennis courts, it's all through the programs. We also need to recognize that while we're funding this new building with school taxes, not all Franklin City residents pay Franklin School taxes. There are two other school districts that tax city residents. We need to figure out how these areas of the city that do not pay Franklin School taxes will be asked to pay and utilize this new facility. At one point in time, and Brad, you can probably shed some light on that, there was a tiered fee schedule. If you were a resident of the school, if you were a school district, you had paid a different fee. Though you maybe remember that also. I don't know when it went away, but we still have different people, different school districts in our community. The city-school district relationship needs to be better defined and maybe formalized before we start something new. Also, recreation has become a business. Note the many business partners in our class offering. Swimming isn't innovative. Next step is for dance. Chosun Black Belt for martial arts. Academy of Performing Arts for theater. Jazzercise for dance exercise. New facilities are becoming available. There's open gyms at the sports complex. The yard facility opened up in Oak Creek. The OAW facility in New Berlin just came back online. And let's not forget all the facilities at The Rock. Given the recreational environment in our city, in our region, maybe these business partnering is our future. And it appears we have a strong foundation already in our programs. There is no urgency to build anything. We should direct administration to address community input on this, on this plan, on this building, formalize some of our relationships with the city, and most importantly, let's establish a planning process for future facility needs. This is not a process when it just shows up, or we've talked about it, and now we're here expecting to push a button and go. So I think we have some different avenues to go here. We can ask our community, do they want to increase their taxes for this building? It is $3.3 million more than we have. Do you want to make some kind of motion? Let's just, I'd like to hear what you think about, I mean, and you've asked questions about this.
You asked Mr. Anderson for some input, so perhaps he'd, perhaps he'd like to...
The tier system you speak of is still in place. Franklin residents pay their taxes. If you are in one of the other school districts, your house pays a $35 fee for the year to be able to sign up for, and register with other Franklin School District residents. That is still in place.
Is this, is this written down somewhere? I was not aware of this. It's in the rec guide.
And it's in the rec guide.
It's in the rec guide? And how did we determine that $35?
Years ago, it was the average assessed value of the house by the mil rate that was given as a taxes.
I never saw it in there, so, thank you.
That's been in place for a while. And the partnerships that you speak of are limited. Although we've had to go outside because of space, we're allotted two or three slots in a lot of these places for classes that are already running. So it's not like we have full access to rent or to put in multiple classes in those facilities. We're very limited, and a lot of the places are pay-to-play, like The Rock. I couldn't go up there and say, "I'd like to use your baseball field for T-ball," or any of that kind of stuff. They're booked, I mean, everything is pay-to-play.
So when they sign up for a jazzercise class, they just go to class, right? They pay, who gets the fee?
It's a 75-25 split. The place that owns the business gets 75% of the money, we get 25%. We get three to four slots. Our people sign up, we have waiting lists, but they're not accommodated because the host already has the class publicized through themselves.
But they can go there without being a rec department?
But they pay more.
But they pay more.
So I mean, that's the arrangement we have with some of those places. Chosun does after-school tai chi, and then if the parents want to do a family session, they can come back in. It's, I mean, there's not, most of these places offer one or two classes for us, because we've asked, and they're like, "Sure, well," and it's great advertising for them. Goes out, you know, on our website, and the people... Yeah, so it's, it's very limited availability to expand, or limited availability in any one of their classes.
They can add more classes, can they not?
Well, they're still under the same pressures to put their classes in, to make the money that they want to make as well.
They only have, they're businesses, and they're trying to make money, I mean...
This conversation has veered into, is there even value in having a rec department? Which I think is...
That's not true.
Well, that's kind of, that was what I, now let me preface this by saying, I think that there is value in having, allowing some time for community comment, once, once it becomes public that this rendering exists, these are the suggested classes, just to see if people, you know, say that they would utilize them. I believe your interest survey was from what year, 2018?
2018.
So a lot has changed since then. So I do think that taking a couple of weeks to sort of allow us to gather input in whatever way we can is valuable, but I...
We're raising taxes to do this.
Linda, let me finish talking. But I do think that there, the other thing is, it would be helpful to have sort of a standing, I don't know, rec department committee, so that, so that it's not just you coming here to try and convince us that the community uses and needs the rec department, because, you know, that might be something going forward that might be helpful, to just sort of put a face to it and allow just there be some visibility and more regular communication. Because it is sort of an unusual arrangement, not unheard of, but unusual in this community, that the rec department lives with the school district rather than the city.
I don't think it's that unusual, and perhaps, perhaps others have, I mean, Oak Creek's rec department is in the schools, other places around.
I'm not asking it to do it differently, I just, we're not discussing how that is right now. I'm not opposed to the rec department, I just think we need to be more, to your point, you want it to be, we're not kind of guessing, let's be more formal in our administration of it, and how it relates to the city.
That's not exactly what I was saying.
Isn't there a board liaison to the rec department? Because I was your liaison years ago, so is there not a board liaison? Oh, it's Alan. Alan!
I also think, I also, I don't disagree that we need a plan going forward for a building plan.
A process, to plan for buildings. Not just a plan for a building, a process.
He's brought this to the board numerous times.
We've had, he's come to the board in October, every October, to present his report, and it's come up as a conversation.
And every time, every single time...
He said, "When you have money, you can build a new building." And we have $2.3 million.
Linda, please, please, allow other people to finish their thoughts before you interject. That's rude. You're right. There is, there, there should be a building process plan for all district buildings. I would say that the survey results are, are in people taking the classes such that we don't have room for the classes that we need to have. We do not have room for that. We are bursting at the seams, we have, we have, and whether we want to have the rec department under our auspices, I don't think it's, I don't think it's actually that different of a thing from other like communities. We have them. And perhaps we should, perhaps we should try to partner with the city more, although we certainly have tried. But you're right, there's a sticker shock. And I think, but for the pandemic, when, when we were bursting at the seams before the pandemic and we had close to the amount of money and we thought this building was going to cost $3 million, we have about that much money. We thought perhaps that this building might cost $3.5 or $4 million when we were here in September or October. And, and now we see a, now we see a much larger number. I suspect that this is one of those things that we would be chasing forever. Next year, now it's $2.3 million. Maybe next year would be $3 million, but the building costs $7 million rather than $5.5 million. But I don't know that. At some point, we need, if we want to have a community, we need to have a community building for people to do these things in. We need, we, we talk about equity a great deal. When these programs, when you say, go do it privately, you can just do it privately. Not everybody can just do it privately because it costs 25% more. Or more. I'm making up a number. But it, but it's, it's significant. At some point, if we want to have a community, we need to have community buildings. We need to have space for them to run. And we certainly have the demand. The demand is there. Could there be a process where we, where we come back in one month to, to do this? Certainly there could. And maybe that's what the board will want. And we could ask the public and that would be, that would be completely fine by me. But we have been talking about this for five years and pretty soon it'll be 10 years. And there still won't be a building. And there still won't be room. In fact, there will be less because as it turns out Franklin's growing. So perhaps others would like to comment.
To your point before, Linda, you, you know, you mentioned that I was asking questions too. I, I agree with you. This was a lot to, you know, open up your board packet on Friday and see this. I, you know, we, we asked for the information and I'm happy to have the information. I just think there's, there is a lot to, there's a lot to talk about. But to that, to, you know, also to your point, to the other point everybody's been making, we have been talking about it even before I was on the board. I know I sat in a meeting as a community member for a couple of years and kept hearing the same report, not the same report. Nothing against your reports, Brad. But, you know, year by year, the, kind of the same themes are coming up. And the answer is always, we're gonna need a building, we're gonna need a building. So this year, we said, tell us more about this building. And now they've told us about this building and it's time for us to make a decision about what we want. And to Mike's point, we don't have, we don't have the space. And we don't have the space to serve, we, we talk a lot about serving our students. I think we as a district do, you know, a really good job serving our students. But what about the, you know, our future students? Could we be reaching out and interacting more with our two and three-year-olds to get them ready for four-year-old kindergarten? Could we be reaching out to them to give some of that social emotional learning for parents and students? You know, those little kids. What about the elderly or not, I don't want to call elderly, but older members of our community who also pay taxes? They've paid taxes a long time, but what do they get for it? You know, what if we had space for them? What if we could offer more things? And if we did have the space, how many more activities and things we could really develop a, a much more like thriving partnership with, you know, community parks and recs? I think the need is there, desire is there. Was it a lot to process to, you know, for this meeting? Yes, which is why I'm asking, could we have two more weeks to, you know, to think about it before we actually take the action on it? But I, I mean, I think it's, I think it's valuable. I think it's a valuable project, I do.
We don't have the money for it.
But we have, we do have the ability to have a levy, which I believe if I understood everything in our stuff and the numbers and things from Mr. Cromie, it'd be two years of a levy and that would pay for the project. It would not be long-term borrowing over, you know, 10, 20 years of a levy. It would be a two years of a levy. Is that correct, Mr. Cromie?
Yep, so kind of using that five to six million dollar range is about $165 to $230 yearly on a $500,000 home. So that's, I calculated it on that value. So 330 to 460 over both years. And it is, it's a finite amount. The wonderful thing about our particular project as it relates in its current timeframe is we would be able to put it over two levies versus if you said yes, they'd be constructing tomorrow and we'd have one levy to put it on. So we have the ability to spread it out over multiple years. Unfortunately, without taking out a bond, we could not stretch it further than the actual construction timeframe. But, um, the, the two-year amount is, you're right on with that.
So basically, in the next couple, if we do table this for a couple of weeks, the question I'm going to be asking people is, would it be, if you have a $500,000 home, would, how would you feel about $500 more in your city recreation portion of your levy? Per year, right? Yeah.
Total.
Over, over two years. $250 per year. And that's an...
And that's on a $500,000?
Now, how would, this would be levied through the rec department levy, correct?
Yep, through our recreation department.
So I have a hard time figuring out how then the health clinic, I mean, wouldn't that, shouldn't that be a separate...
So that would have to be paid for out of Fund 46.
Okay. I'm just asking questions about logistics of the plan we were presented.
Yep, so they, so again, they would give us bid A, which is the rec building, bid B, which is the alternate of the clinic. So we'd have two totally separate costs associated with that.
Is there any room? So I was at the library today and Franklin is unique in that there aren't a lot of community spaces, but that's one space that people use a lot. You know, my kids were there all the time under that tree, like any day. Like, let's go to the library because you're driving me bananas. When that building was built, there was some degree of a public-private partnership involved. Like, everything has a plaque there, like so-and-so paid for the fireplace, so-and-so paid for the drinking fountain. Would there be any, given the community nature of this project, might there be an opportunity for something like that?
Or selling bricks?
Yeah, that kind of thing. I don't know.
So I'll start with the brick portion first because I'm not a large fan of that because it typically comes with repair costs and replacement costs. And oftentimes you end up over 25 years upside down on that particular project, although it helps you get it built at the very beginning. Um, the partnership, certainly. I, truthfully, I couldn't tell you how long that will take. I, I don't have a ton of Franklin connections being here, but I can tell you somebody who has had a lot of connections can go out and raise a few hundred thousand dollars in a month. I don't know how long it would take to raise three million dollars or so.
But a lot of times the community is, so for example, the rendering had a fireplace in it. And perhaps that feels like a little bit of extra and so, you know...
Not a fireplace. That's like, uh, I, I would almost call it a, like, um, counter space.
Counter space.
Sinks of people.
Okay, never mind, I misread it. I must have been looking at a different architectural rendering.
Rinse off something very similar to the sink behind you.
I'm just, I'm just brainstorming here. But again, I wonder, there's like the Friends of the Library and, and there's a library board. I just wonder if there might be, I don't know. Would that help us with our, as we talk about rec department into the future?
Maybe if you can approach them, all the business leaders, hey, we are, want to build something, can you please donate some, you know, maybe?
I don't know. It's, fundraising is hard, but...
But especially if it is going to serve, you know, the greater community, there might be possibility for that. But it, you know, I, going back to my point before, I mean, it's not, it's not just about the, you know, older and younger. This would certainly benefit our, you know, our school-aged students as well in terms of access to, you know, more, more fields for your flag football and your soccer or more space for your Cub Scouts and Girl Scouts and Lego leagues and things like that to, to meet. You know, your, your cheer groups. I don't know how tall the ceilings are, maybe they can't throw people up. But, you know, like, I just feel like there would be endless uses to this space that would all benefit the Franklin community at large that we are tasked with serving. Go ahead.
Please, Linda.
I have a question for Brad. So if we have the space and I'm assuming you brought in the martial arts academy, how do we share the revenue then? How does that work?
It could happen one of two ways. We could ask them to provide an instructor and, and we wouldn't compete with the equipment for the upper levels. It would be an introductory instructor to come in and run an introductory class, much like we do at the elementary schools. We would pay the instructors fees. So we've done that before, years and years and years ago with a dance studio. They provided a, a younger instructor that needed experience. She, she did the introductory stuff and then as the kids progressed, they went to the studio directly.
So we, we would pay the instructor?
Correct.
It would be on your payroll?
Potentially, if, if they wanted to do it.
That's how you tip...
They didn't.
If they didn't, it would be the same arrangement. The kids would take it at the elementary school or they would go to his studio. And you gotta remember, there's two to three slots in these classes. These aren't, it's, it's not a class of 30 kids in, in one of the studios.
I have a question about that. When you say there's only three or five slots, is that the demand?
No, they're, they're running the class at their site.
But when we say there's, we, you know, we have so much demand, but you only have three or five slots. So I guess where does the, does the class they're currently running come to us? I mean, they have their own facility, they're filling it. I don't understand where...
But you're, you're talking about the smallest revenue that we, we do with our co-op classes because there's two or three slots in existing classes. So they fill their schedule at their facility. They say they'll give two or three slots to us at an existing class that's already happening. If, the, the classes that we typically run right now, all of our fitness classes have waiting lists. If, if those came over to this new facility, we would take probably 10 more people in a class of 30 because this is bigger. So that would be all of our revenue increase in some of this stuff. We work with the Wisconsin Institute on Healthy Aging.
So then we pay the instructor on these?
It's our employee, correct.
And all the classes, the yoga instructor, all those people?
That are listed that way, correct. The jazzercise is another one that, that you brought up. Anything on that grid that you had sent us, those are ones that give us two to three slots.
So, um, what's happening with swimming? Is there open swim at all? I mean, I'm a, I'm one of these people, I'm a retiree that, I'm looking for stuff to do and can I swim anywhere in Franklin?
Not through the rec department?
Not through the rec department.
Well, what are we doing about that?
Well, right now, the reason why that left years ago and then you were on the board when that happened was because the high school swim team numbers expanded. So practices went into 6:00, 6:30. And by the time you start staggering swim lessons and open swims, you were at 8, 9 o'clock and our enrollment dropped. It was pool temperature, it was air temperature, it was locker rooms, it was all of those things. So the decision was made or consulted with the board that we would partner up with Innovative. Innovative would take over because they've got pools that are in almost 100 degrees. They've got community locker rooms and that's who's offering the swim lessons.
But what about the open swim? About me?
We, we really never had open swim for probably the last 10 years that we had swimming lessons. So the open swims you talk about that we had were a long time ago. We'd have a class at 8 o'clock for people training for triathlon, but there was never open swims.
It's too bad that we can't offer everything, but this seems like a good incremental opportunity to offer the types of fitness and early child, especially those mommy and me type classes.
Or daddy and me.
Oh, yep, adult caregiver and me classes.
And the one thing on that, that survey that I, I want to bring up again was the number one rated thing out of any age group in the city of Franklin for people was senior citizen daytime classes. That was for adults, that was for seniors ranking it. So it wasn't just strictly a senior-loaded percentage. It was everybody that was asked that question and we can't do any of that right now.
Well, doesn't mean that seniors can't do anything in Franklin. I have, kind of have to say that, that's not true. I can play pickleball five days a week, I can go play cards, I can...
If you want to pay for it, correct.
There is a desire for seniors.
I'm not done, sorry. So, um, but this all costs money. So I guess, do the taxpayers know this is coming? They don't know it's coming. It's $3.3 million. I think we should ask them. Not ask them, do you want programs, but do you want to pay $3.3 million for a new recreation building? And if that comes in, you know, yeah, we do, well then we're all set. Let's go with, uh, with a advisory referendum in April and then we'll know.
When you, when you chose the size of this building, Franklin is clearly still growing. Is this... How long is this building? How long would this building be useful before we out, not useful? How long before we outgrow it?
I think you're probably looking at 20 years. I, I mean, when, the, the size of the studios and Leah Voss is here, does all our scheduling and, and programming. The schedules you see are things that would be moved if this building opened tomorrow. These are existing programs that would come in here. Our, our senior programs with Weha, with Carol Sobelski at the Health Department, some of these people, the lovely neighbor stepping. These are groups we've worked with in the past that there's no room here for us to do anything during the daytime.
Sure.
So this was designed with the largest studio being the high impact with music at the far end by the, down here by the, the...
Loading dock?
Loading dock. The other two studios were for yoga tai chi type classes and parent-child classes. They all have sinks in them. And the, the community room in the front with all the glass and the tables was mostly senior-type programming, card groups, some of the stepping on classes that we have. And it would also be any of the lecture series classes we have for adults. So in any given night, we've got multiple programs going on in the district. But you see, there's holes in that schedule that was attached to this because there is room for future growth over the years for programs. So, I mean, that, that's what would happen in these, these rooms right now. But it, it wouldn't take long to fill a lot of that.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I'm wondering how long, I'm wondering how long before...
There's no longer adequate.
There's no longer adequate space.
I, I think you've got a while.
Okay, thank you.
You know, with what, what's in there now and it would take us, you know, once we knew what was happening with this facility and started making partners, it would take that ball rolling to start getting stuff put into those extra open slots.
But what, we need partners to fill this, those slots?
No.
Oh, okay. And most of what you would, would be bringing it in from where it currently is. You just talked about bringing a lot of stuff over into these spaces. That currently is happening, currently running, existing spaces.
Well, some of the spaces, correct me if I'm wrong, are happening in Ben Franklin, which, that's part of that is the safety issue. It is cordoned off, right? It is a separate entrance in that multipurpose room. But we, I'm the Ben Franklin liaison, that's why I'm talking about this. But the, but we want to try and keep those populations separate. So that was the safety issue that I think Mr. Cromie was speaking to. And that is our, currently our only flex space in the district to accommodate increasing class sizes, is at Ben Franklin.
And that, that's been limited with the addition of an extra lunch period. And that was the classes that used to happen at the library that are no longer able to be held there.
Ben Franklin is not long for this world as a rec department op, option.
Well, we should get with our students and ask who they want to pay for.
Alan, please.
What additional revenues are we going to be generating from when we have this space available?
In looking at where we are right now, this time last year over the six months from July 1st till the end of December, our enrollment growth is up almost 30% in our programs. The way we look at it is, as you move some of those programs that are capped at the elementary schools and multipurpose rooms at 30, they would come over here and be at 40. So you're, and, and we've got waiting lists to show that we would fill those.
So what are the dollars?
Oh, I, I would project, um, conservatively, the first year that we would open, it would be anywhere from $60,000 to $75,000 in additional revenue. Just strictly from either the addition to existing programs or new programs that would be put in place.
Okay, so by the time we would do that for any number of years, it would take quite a while to cover that $3 million?
Yeah, and you'd be chasing the increase then too.
Right.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Would we ever consider doing what they do at the Oak Creek Community Center, is renting out the rooms, say for a wedding? Or does that, I mean, that would generate revenue? There is no real venue space in Franklin. I know Angie and I have talked about that before.
I, we would certainly be open to it, but these would not be designed as a ballroom as the Oak Creek Community Center is. In order to do the type of programming that is being presented. Like, if you've been inside there, that's kind of designed for that particular piece. These would be more hard surface flooring versus the carpet type of, of spaces.
Wouldn't you also need a kitchen of some sort, like a catering kitchen to do something like that?
Well, where it says fireplace is supposed to be more of that style, like countertop. So it's not necessarily a true kitchen, so to speak. But in reviewing, when we, when we met with PRA, the idea wasn't we'd be catering events there, but we might have a space to lay out hors d'oeuvres or something. Yeah, right. More of the grab and go types of foods. But we would certainly, like, in thinking about that, the room, what would be in the upper left, putting a folding table in there if we were bringing in sandwiches for a card club type of, like, you would be able to do that pretty easily.
I don't know if we need a motion at this point, but I... I don't know if we need a motion at this point, but I would, um, could we reach some consensus? Could we table this until our next meeting to allow board members to speak to constituents and just digest this information and ask questions more? Would that, is that a, what do you all think about that?
That's what I was trying to suggest earlier, Ben.
I think that's a good idea too, but I'd also be curious to know what, um, what procedure would we have to go through in order to make, uh, an advisory?
Referendum.
Referendum on the April ballot. Are we too late? Are we, are we too late to do that? Who would do that? How, how does that work?
Well, they, you have to have seventy days notice to get it out there. So we would be pushing on that right now. My quick math is Linda brought that up. It'd be, it's at least about eighty, eighty-five days out. So I, I think we'd be up against a really hard time frame to say we could get that on in April. If we're deciding to go that way, we'd have to wait.
I feel like if you were going to do that, you would need-
You have to know them seventy days. I don't know that we can get there in like seven workdays. I don't know. We'd have to find out, Linda. But seventy days is, is the guideline on it. That's not mine. So it gives us about maybe, I mean, I'm calculating eighty-three days. And that's weekends. So to stay seventy gives us maybe five workdays to try to put together the question, determine what that looks like and all the other pieces that go into it. So.
Then there would be quite a communication.
If the board wants us to do that, we can definitely make an effort. But yeah, getting the community up to board on what that looks like. Yeah, it gives us about eighty-three days to do that if we can get on that.
I do not support doing that at this time only because anytime you put a referendum, there has to be some sort of groundwork of, of community education. And if you plop that on the ballot with that little time, lead-up time.
But maybe we have to think about deferring the building. I mean, this wasn't a building-
Let's talk about that in two weeks.
It wasn't a building of urgency six months ago.
But you know what? I got the sense that it's been rather urgent for the past five to ten years. That's the impression that I always got, uh, when listening in on these reports about enrollment needs and space restrictions as the district grows. But perhaps I, we just were receiving information differently.
I would concur with Angie. I've been on the board long, for a long time. And it's always been a sense of urgency. We've always been short of space. We've always been turning people away because we don't have the space. I think we've had little eight-year-olds, you know, practicing basketball at eight, nine o'clock at night when they really should be in bed. You know, we're turning away our senior citizens if we're not providing space for them. And if Ben Franklin is growing the way Angie's saying that it is, then yeah, we are going to need more space, but there has always been an urgency for a building.
And there's no secret that we bought the land and that there is some plan. I mean, that's, how long has it been since that land was purchased?
Six, seven years.
Uh, about four years.
Four years. So, I mean, that was purchased and at the time it was talked about, because I, I remember sitting as a community member at the board meetings, talked about future expansion of the fields and parking wreck facilities and things like that. I mean, it's, it's been out there. Has there been a yard sign in every yard saying, hey, this is happening? No. But it has been part of the plan. There has been conversation about it. It's not a completely foreign topic.
It's a bit disingenuous to suggest that it is.
If we keep waiting, the price is only going to increase.
But I will say again that you're right, Debbie, thinks we've had these scenarios of things not, people playing basketball. But things have changed also to address some of those. There's more facilities in the community. Parents are taking their kids to play basketball at different places now.
Okay, but if your parents are taking your kids to go to New Berlin to play basketball, is that taking money out of Franklin? Is that not supporting your Franklin community?
Yeah, shouldn't- And that kind of goes to your point, Linda, of us not holding graduation at American Family Field. You want it here in Franklin.
I think we should make this bigger and accommodate graduation.
But should we not keep our kids here, our students here, our seniors here, our families here in Franklin? And provide for them here versus sending them out of the community?
Build those connections with our families and our community members.
Angie and, and, um, Angie, you or, or anybody, um, we mentioned we would, we would table this and, and, and come back in two weeks. What are we going to know in two weeks that we don't know now? I'm not saying, I'm not saying we shouldn't do this. I'm saying what needs to be done from, from administration so that in two weeks we come back here in, in, um, and vote.
I think if there's any way to sort of, um, put it out to the public that these plans are being discussed so that if people wanted to shoot us an email, they could. If you have any people, um, you know, that's what I'm looking for. I don't, I feel comfortable making a decision without a referendum to guide my hand to do so. But I would like to take the opportunity, because this will get out to the public now that we've discussed it in open session, just to receive some feedback.
Could the blueprints of the, the plan be put on the website? Could Chad do that?
Put it, like, maybe in the district newsletter, the, you know, just like a sketch of this is a proposal and this, you know, some-
And like some of the classes you would consider offering.
With, with the financial impact of, you know, per five hundred thousand dollars. Maybe even not just on a five hundred thousand dollar house. Maybe break it out over, you know, per hundred thousand, it'd be this much over the two year. I don't know.
And when is the next district newsletter going to the city? City residents?
That's not for a while.
Well, our next district newsletter that goes out electronically is next Thursday. A mailer to mailboxes is, we're working on, we've never done one this time of year or that I have found. But we are working on implementing that, but that still won't be for another-
The city newsletter has an insert.
Are you, she's, Linda's, Ms. Wacalski's talking about opening doors that goes in the city newsletter.
Oh, um, that goes out, I believe, beginning of March is the date for the next one.
That wouldn't be fast enough. But if we have, even, even in our building newsletters that go out on Monday, you could have something that would be like, just a, um, a one-page Google Doc of a couple bullet points and linked sketches or something.
It's not me, it's not reaching seniors. You know, only forty percent of the families in Franklin have kids in school.
It would give us at least a beginning data point to understand what the-
I guess why can't we?
And I'm guessing anything that gets posted in a district newsletter is also going to be so, talked about neighbor to neighbor, posted on social media, things like that. I think we will hear back from people who are interested.
But why could we not do an informational insert? Granted, if it's March, there's, there's not an urgency. We're not building this tomorrow. There's, we don't have to vote in two weeks because we got to go, go, go. We don't. This was not urgent six months ago. It doesn't need, we have to do it in two weeks. If we have an opportunity to inform in the community, the one that goes into every Franklin resident, we are looking at building this new building. If you have comments, raise your hand. That can, you may, it would be kind of like a referendum, but again, it's advisory, but it would, everybody know we're planning, we're planning spending this money for a new building. You are informed and it will increase your taxes.
We've, we've been talking, um, about this building for five years. I've been on, I've been on the board for, um, we've, we bought the land and, and basically bought the land to start planning to build a building. We have- Thank you. We have, um, we have, I, I was at those meetings. Perhaps we could pull them up, but-
Is there any harm in asking our, our citizens?
What, what I'm saying is nobody has, nobody has asked me a question about it in four years every time we talk about it.
Is there measure?
Have, okay, perhaps they've, perhaps they talked to you about it, Linda.
I've talked to people. They would say absolutely not.
You should encourage them to write us as we-
Why can't we just ask all our citizens in the newsletter that's going out, what, what are we afraid of?
What is our usual response? When we put something in a newsletter, do we hear from the community about it?
I don't think it's that we're afraid. I'm not afraid of something, but at some point we were elected to make decisions. And so why don't we query the constituency on every vote we have to take?
Because we're raising taxes three point three million, that's why. Whenever we build a school building, we let our public know.
Those are slightly higher dollar amounts and they are bonded over many years.
It's the building. It's five point six million.
Can I interject?
Please.
Anybody?
Please.
Thank you. I think you're on. All of us have the best intentions to do the right thing. As a community, we need a place. I think most of us agree on this. Whether two point three, five point three million, whatever, we need a space for our community. And we want our community to stay within our community, not go to New Berlin, Oak Creek, anything like that. Because that's in fact, it's lots of, lots of dollars to our community. And why shall our community go out when, if we can provide that? So I think, you know, maybe in two weeks' time, let's digest all this information, you know? And then in two weeks' time, we can knock our worry. At least it, I think, you know, gives, as, as suggested, you know, I think it gives all of us time to digest this information. Although this has been on the radar, it's not a new information. It has been on the radar, but in two weeks, we have waited almost six, seven years. I, I moved to Franklin in two thousand fourteen and I know that they were talking about since then, you know? So, and it's my ninth year in Franklin. So I think two weeks, if it's okay with you guys, let's think about it. We have the best intentions to do the best thing for the community and we want to. And to be honest, you know, I'm very passionate about seniors. Because they have worked hard to pay the taxes, they've served our country many instances. And they deserve our support and help and a platform for them to be engaged in the day period.
I'm, I'm perfectly happy to wait two weeks. What I, or a month. But what I, what I would, what I, the question remains, what do we do? Is this, what are we going to do in this two weeks?
I think we need to-
There's, we need to direct, we need to direct something to do in the time, in the interceding time.
Okay, well, me, I would like as much comment becoming our direction as possible. So if we can get information in as many public-facing outlets as possible in the meantime, encouraging them, encouraging people to contact board members with their support or, uh, what's the opposite of support?
Lack of support.
Lack of support for this project. That's honestly one of the biggest things I'm going to be looking for. I would be interested in any modifications that could be made to this to, to affect the range. Because you said that what would we, we would be doing was be giving you a dollar amount to shoot for. So if we said, well, what if we wanted to keep it under four million, what would, can you, if you can give us a sense of what would be gained or lost in, in doing that?
To get to four million would be an entire space.
What do you mean by that?
A room. Like if you wanted to get to four million, we'd have to-
Does that five point five include the clinic alternate?
No, that, that's its own particular piece. So-
And doesn't include the fields?
Yes. Yep, all, everything is included in the five to six million dollar.
It does include-
But everything, quick stroke would be, you'd be removing a room if you wanted to get down to five. May, and, and shortening probably.
So honestly, I'm just going to be talking to people and hoping there's an email.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, however we can get information out to people in whatever, whatever venue. And, you know, asking people to share their ideas and share, you know, talk to your neighbors. Let's get out and talk to our neighbors and find out. So we have, you know, a better idea of that, but I, I don't, I don't know.
So as far as communication that's coming up, like the district newsletter, which is families, obviously, right? Goes out next week, Thursday. Our board meeting would be, you know, less, about a week after that. Just kind of get that timeframe in your mind. Opening doors is scheduled to go out beginning of March. We have to get our content to our editor by the end of next week at the absolute latest. We're shooting for before that. Has to be to the city by February third or fourth. So just to kind of keep those in. If we want to go the opening door piece to get more feedback, we'd have to think about, um, that timeframe too. That we'd have to, it would go out later. It would go out till beginning of March, maybe end of February. But we have to have that content too over the next two weeks.
March, you're saying is the, would be the, if you want to go with the citizens, all the citizens.
Right, right.
And we're talking about, we're coming back, it'll be like February. We're talking like eight weeks more to get our whole community informed. That's going to put a big crink in your plans to get this building where you want it? Eight weeks to inform, why can't we do that?
I'm not saying we can't.
Okay, that's what I want you to think about in two weeks. Why wouldn't we ask all of us, inform everybody that we're going to build this exciting news or decision point? Why wouldn't we do that?
Is it feasible that we could have communication that would be clear and accurate in the, it sounds like less than a week before you'd have to get it to an editor?
Is this information not clear and accurate to us right now?
Well, but it's presented differently to us than it would be if you're looking at like, you know, you're not going to give, and this was multiple pages. This, I can't count the paragraphs fast enough. But I mean, this was multiple pages, six different links and whatever else. You're not going to put all of that in a little community bulletin because guess what? Now you've given it to the community, but they're not reading it because it's far too long. You need four or five bullet points and a graph and maybe a picture.
And a website if they want more information.
Maybe a website link or QR code or something. But you're, you can't put all of this information into the document that they're sending out to the community.
But we can, but we could do some kind of communication.
Well, that's what I'm asking. That was my question. Is it feasible, given all the other communication that is happening in the district at any given moment? Is it feasible? Is it fair to ask for this quick of a turnaround with this information? Is it possible to do it?
You asking me?
Kind of.
Okay, I wasn't sure. I just gave the timelines for our communication.
Chad's up here, so I can ask Chad, but-
No, I just spoke for Chad's communication timeline because him and I work hand in hand on that. So anything's possible, right? Like if we say we want to do it, we can do it. I think there's a good point to saying like, it has to get, be succinct. You know, I think you're also being front-facing to your community and transparent, which is what we always are. Clearly, it's been in board minutes since like twenty seventeen, I believe is what I looked at. So you want to do that. You also want to be cognizant of like, you've gone through referendums in this community. How was information portrayed at that point in time? What did the community like seeing? You know, just putting it out there to say we put it out there and then it's not digestible or it's too, you know, not in the right avenue. You know, I think that there is some value to studying, like we have gone to referendums if we're now asking the community, but maybe not to the level of a referendum. You did a lot of studies then and perception surveys. What was the best way to communicate with the community in that point, right? Chad just did a survey on communication and we went over it. You know, a lot of people get their information by talking to people. Whether we like it or not, that is what came back as a high point in that data. So you have to also be thinking about that piece. Social media, some people are on, and then the district newsletter. Again, right, that only goes out to our families. It's not the whole community. I just think the bigger part of it would be like, what's worked for us with referendums? What's our community used to seeing us communicate? And making sure we kind of resemble that. We wouldn't want to put something together quickly that isn't as, that same format that we've used. And then potentially like in a growing community, I think it's only realistic to think, if you're growing, your schools have to grow to hold more kids. You know, we want to be consistent in how we message those pieces. That would be my only thought on it. Um, and how we get that together succinctly and clearly and aligning and how we've communicated in the past and how we may consider communicating in the future.
Andy, when is, um, based on the timeline, if we voted tonight, when do we think the building would be built? I'm just trying to reverse engineer this. I'm not, I'm not suggesting, Linda, that we vote tonight.
Yep, so-
And he could suggest we vote tonight. That is not crazy.
So here's the Gantt chart. Um, as you see it, this bottom line is construction. So we, we're still, uh, potentially a year out from construction if we voted tonight. So typically what will happen in any given project, so if you decide on any project to say, let's move forward and we're going to go out and bid this project, there's going to be a series of meetings between an architect and an engineering firm. So it's typically housed under one roof. Superior would handle all that, but they're going through top to bottom, the entire plans. They're talking about types of, again, what type of flooring would you like to get it? What, talk about cabinetry. All of those things are going to go in there. Um, types of glass. Do you want to really focus on this type of heating or is it a high efficiency? Like everything, right? And so all of that just takes periods of time.
I understand.
There's that four months, um, at, at minimum for DNR. So you'd probably try to jump on that now as you start that timeframe. But realistically, it's probably going to take us, that twelve months is really adding some. But I would say realistically, we would be like eight to nine months to really plan this top to bottom and have specs drawn out to go out to bid, get those bids back, evaluate and put it out.
So when we, if this goes forward, it's a two-year timeline basically from the time we vote. Is that?
By the time it would be fully constructed, probably.
It's about two years from, roughly, yep.
Yeah, their Gantt chart would have it going out of like April, June of twenty twenty-five. So, yeah. And they obviously go on the long end of it, right? DNR could move faster and other things like Andy said.
Sure, but it's-
For our size building, like they have twelve months for construction. Truthfully, a lot of that is based on today's timeframe of getting materials. So roofing is incredibly hard to get. Um, and there are many other things, um, that are incredibly hard to get as well. And so a lot of that construction timeframe is simply estimating what's it going to be like eighteen months from now to try to get all these things and get them on site. So again, twelve month, a, a typical building of that size takes like, from the time you actually break ground, probably about eight months. If you were talking something like a full school, you're probably realistically like eighteen to twenty-four months.
Sure, but this building specifically.
Probably realistically like eight months if everything could flow one thing after the other. Probably realistically like eight months if everything could flow one thing after the other. We're not huge, so we're not going to monopolize an entire construction crew. They're going to come and do a lot of work and then they're going to relocate and do some other work, then they're going to come back. Again, because we wouldn't warrant an entire crew spending their entire life here. Not that there wouldn't be vendors here every day doing something, but.
The, the reason I ask is, I, I don't think it's, it doesn't seem like communication would be, it, it seems frankly like a nightmare to try and do something like this in two weeks. We're just setting ourselves up to fail.
Oh, you mean to craft something to go in the city newsletter? Is that what you mean?
No, I mean, I mean, to, 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 to come back here and vote in two weeks.
I see what you're saying.
Is, is similar to voting tonight. What is a, to, I would suggest a different timeline if we're not going to vote tonight. We could come back and vote.
A longer timeline, I hope it's what you're saying.
I'm not going to, yes, it's not, I'm not going to call a meeting for, for Thursday or for Friday. Yeah, so it'd be a longer timeline.
Like looking at March is.
Like two months instead of two weeks.
And we're able to accommodate community communication.
Yes, if we, in my opinion, it's, it's, in my opinion, I prefer that we vote tonight. But in, in my opinion, it's two weeks is, is not a, is not a sufficient timeframe to do anything.
Especially since we've basically said the main thing, at least that I want, is just to receive community feedback.
Yes, so if we want the community feedback, my suggestion would be to come back at the March, whatever the first meeting in March is.
When would the document go out? I'm, I'm going to go back for just a second, which you said there's a document that goes out in March?
The opening doors goes out the first week of March is what the cities told us, but we have to have our information to them next Friday at the absolute latest, the 20th, preferably before that.
So if it's going to go out the first week of March, we'd be looking at our second meeting in March to put this back on the agenda to talk about.
March 22nd.
Right?
Or a vote, a vote. Well, what if we have a budget that's coming up in May, which is after April? Why if we could just fold it into the budget and that way we'll know exactly tax levy impact at that point. And we will also have community feedback.
We won't know because we won't have, it won't have been bid.
Yeah, and we don't have our actuals for budget until, that usually, I mean, yeah, October. So you're just kicking the can down the road.
We will have estimates, we will know what the state budget looks like.
I'm comfortable voting on March 22nd if we have a community communication.
Would there be any benefit to having another discussion about it at one of our meetings before the 22nd? So that for those people who pay attention to board meeting agendas and they wanted to come and address us based on what they saw as an agenda item? They could come and speak at a board meeting before the vote?
I think if they came on the 22nd, that would accomplish that.
Or they could come and just comment during community comment, without being an agenda item.
Yep, Mike too, please.
Andy, because of course we also talked about the possible clinic, you know, it's, I just want to kind of bring this. Andy, if, in future, if we create, build this new structure, the space which we had, I know that you replied to Ann that that will not be sufficient to have a clinic in the high school there because right now direct department offices which are there. How much of a building I, how much of a space I've been looking at? Because I'm thinking if we can use direct departments moving to the new building and that space can be used as a clinic, then maybe, is it possible that the one, funds which you're talking about from, from 10 or 46 for the clinic? Maybe if we can use that some amount, you know, to help for the funding in that way? The amount of tax levy for the citizens will not be that high. At the same time, you know, I think we are achieving multiple goals, even if we have to, of course, I'm not architecture, but you did mention in the email that you'll have to revamp. But how much is the cost? Maybe $50,000 to kind of revamp some doors around and walls around to kind of have the clinic there?
So first of all, that, we, we asked, that was one of the first questions we asked the architect, is that space big enough? And I went back to him again after, and you had sent that, the email. So I went back to verify that I recollected correctly and that space would not be sufficient to put the clinic in. But truthfully, if we were to build, like if it was large enough as far as a rectangle, with the amount of work that would have to be done in there, I bet you that would probably be a half a million dollars. But ultimately, we would not be able to transition that to cut off some costs and fund 80 because again, fund 80 is a stand alone fund is represented by DPI. And so we would not be able to transfer those funds to fund 80 because that's not an allowable transfer under DPI's rules because it is a taxable entity or taxable fund.
Could we, to, going back to Linda's point about the information about the health clinic? Before our March 20, did you say it's 22nd meeting? Could we have an agenda item that would talk more about a health clinic and the reasons why that would be important and financial impacts? You know, whatever else, so that we would have a better understanding of the clinic when we vote in March about the building project?
I would love to say yes, but we are currently bidding out our services for a consultant.
Can we have an informational session about what it is and why it works or, you know what I mean?
Sure, I, I wouldn't have any numbers to provide you.
Maybe not specific numbers, but even just a better unders, I mean, I understand it because I participate through a different district. So I fully understand the health clinic. I'm not sure that everybody at the table understands the benefit of the health clinic. So just to have some better concept of what that would be.
Sure.
I'm guessing you're going to come back with a, a health insurance proposal for us to be included in next year's budget? I mean, we've had that in the past where you have a recommendation, should we renew or, and that was when you're going to be providing a forecast or at least a re, a benefit, cost benefit for this?
Well, so we're self-funded right now, so there's nothing to renew. The only thing we would bring forth is if we decided to go back to fully funded.
But we do have plan changes that you want us to, I hope we get some say in the plan change.
If we are to bring, if we are to bring plan changes, yes. Or if we are to propose plan changes, we would bring those to the board for approval before we would implement that. But.
That's kind of what this clinic is, a plan change.
No.
No.
Nope, this, this clinic does not have anything to do with our health plan. So if I sign up for my health plan and we have a clinic, I never have to use the clinic ever. I can, but it's, we would ask for approval because it's a separate contract we would be going into. Ultimately, we would be going into it because it would have an effect on the health plan.
But you forecast and project and expect, because that's where the benefit is, right?
But it would not, right, but it would not be a health plan change. Underneath the health plan umbrella.
I'm just trying to help, like, so we have all the information when we come back in March, if it would help.
Yeah, I'd like to have more.
If it would help the board, we could have some information at either our next, you know, maybe sometime in February about the purpose of having an onsite health clinic and how that helps our health plan.
Andy, because when you talk about health clinic, exactly, the space which we're talking about, you know? What is going to, going to be in the health clinic like it? Because I think, you know, we need more specification because there's a, like Ascension is becoming up with this emergency hospitals at 76 hours, that's a big structure. Clinic can be, this room can be a clinic. So I think, I think we need more information exactly when you talk about revamping and all that stuff. We need more information about health clinic, exactly what is the structure? What is the square feet and what is the current, you know, space available at the high school and all that stuff? Because I think for me, I definitely kind of, you know, when we talk about the donors and all that stuff, it's having health clinic benefits at least. You know, the physician I know is that healthy workers, you know, because they have medication check, all this check, which ultimately results in, you know, improvement of our, decreasing our insurances and all that stuff in expenditure which we pay. So I think that concept is very good and that's actually used a lot of places, you know? We have the health clinic, everybody promotes that, so the concept is very good, I think, you know, but how much space do we need actually? Is it like?
Well, fortunately, fortunately, Mr. Cromie has successfully implemented two of these clinics and, and so he'll be able to tell us more about that when it is an agenda item.
So we can have that as an agenda item sometime in February, wherever you think it would fit best.
But you, yeah, you wanted to make a motion.
I mo, I move that we table this discussion until the March, table this action until the March 22nd meeting.
Second.
All right, motion has been made and seconded. We have a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Sapersky?
Aye.
Dr. Khan?
Aye.
Dr. Beer?
Aye.
I also vote aye, and Mr. Sprague.
I will vote aye.
Question, does this mean we are directing administration then to prepare a communication to go into the community, the March mailing?
Yes, Dr. Beer and I will work with administration on it.
That will happen.
That will happen.
Yeah, so we'll have communication, of course, I will be able to get feedback from the community and be able to come back and take a vote at the end of March.
And if possible, maybe in the two weeks meeting, if we can have some information about how was for this kind of projects, information relate to, relate to the community? How was received and all that stuff, some kind of experience? Because, you know, I'd like to kind of know, just spending this time and all that stuff, what is the best way? What was the best, what was the rest of that? So maybe if you, and if you can, if you just kind of, how everything was done in the past, like, and we did the middle school hours.
Historical perspectives.
Thank you so much.
Or maybe in February, you can bring what you have, we can react to it.
For the opening doors, we'll have to go out by like this time next week.
And I don't think this is a formal survey, I mean, the public can comment us.
So what I'm understanding is that at one of the February meetings, we'll bring back a report without any quantitative data because we wouldn't have that right now on the effects, purpose, potential ROI from what other districts have experienced of a health clinic that would be on site at this location. At the, so either the February meetings, it may be at the second one, I know the first one's a little heavier, but I can work with Mr. Sprague on that. On March 22nd, we're going to bring back to vote on the rec building. I also want to note that in March, there's a pre-meeting mingle, so those moments where board members are here at 5:30 for community to come and talk to you. So we will set that for the March 8th meeting, it gives one more opportunity for the community to.
Perfect.
To give you feedback. And then the, whatever's going to go out in opening doors, we'll have to move fast on that. That has to be to them in a week or less, so that won't come back for board review, but I'll work with Mr. Sprague on that and, and Chad and communications will put something together. And then the other piece, Dr. Khan, you're asking for kind of the historical perspective of how we've communicated referendums in the past?
And, and how it was received, the, the, how was the experience, you know, of, like if any project is being done, if it was a referendum.
Honestly, I wish, you should call Doc, Mr. Millsor and see if he'd meet with you because when I was doing research for the historical society and we were going through all the old newspapers, he was like waxing philosophical on all the different referenda that have come before the community, so, I don't know, I think he'd probably like to meet with you and chat about that. He had a lot, a lot of insight.
All right, thank you, everyone. Board liaison reports.
Dr. Blessington continues to patiently meet with me and address my many questions about curricular issues. And I would just like to say, I think this was an example of the benefit of the new process he's put in place for bringing changes to the board ahead of time. Like if we would have had to vote on that today, it would have been just like really contentious and messy. So I think that's great, thank you.
See you tomorrow.
See you tomorrow. No, it just happens to be tomorrow.
I can report, I was part of the wellness committee, we're meeting monthly now, so I'll have lots to talk to you guys about wellness. That committee has been, you know, re-energized and brought back post COVID. So we are re-engaging with wellness with some kind of specific goals around communicating with families and students and staff about screen time, mindfulness, physical activity and nutrition are sort of our headlines there. So we'll be talking about that, I'll be able to tell you more about that month to month. My other liaison is Education Foundation. I was going to say we had a successful fashion show, but I think we've met once since then, that's old news.
The Gulf, the Gulf Committee is starting back up for the Educational Foundation.
So we'll have our Gulf outing again in June.
June 14th, I believe.
The, yeah, I think it is the 14th, it's a Wednesday, not a Friday. Anyway, I'll confirm that, we've got a little bit of time, but Valentine's are coming up, that's one of our fundraisers. And then the consignment sale in March, March 18th. And we are still receiving grants from our educators and trying to fulfill those, you know, as we can. So a lot of things happening with Education Foundation. And then my middle school is my school board or my school liaison and had a chance to meet with Mrs. Rosensky before Christmas. Going back a little bit, talking about the changes in structure there and really focusing on student achievement. And I had a really fun time walking through the building, I got to tell you, that's really, it's always fun to get in the buildings and see the students, but it was, there was a lot of excitement pre-Christmas. I happened to be in one of their food classes, they were making French toast. It was really, it smelled really good. And it was, you know, it was, it was good, it's, exciting things are happening there, so.
Thank you, Linda, please.
Yes, there was an SWSA meeting on Zoom yesterday, was that right?
Correct, yeah.
Again, focused on state budget coming up and I think we can maybe talk a little bit more about that next week. But the, the three asks that they're focusing on is an increase of a revenue, revenue limit per pupil of 1,535 per pupil. They're also focused on 6% increase for specialized ed and, what's the third?
Mental health.
Oh, yes, and mental health service, money for mental health services.
Not for a grant.
That's what the ask is, and there was a point of discussion on, you know, I think, I also went to the PTA meeting at Southwood Glen and there was a presentation on language arts and writing. I keep thinking that's kind of the same story of the budget process, there's going to be characters involved. Some, there was the mention of quality legislators versus other legislators. There's going to be process and, you know, how it's, it is a long process, the budget process is, and there's kind of like word choice. You know, what words we should use, what words we should use. So it's all part of the strategy behind the state budget coming up, it's quite exciting. That's it. Although I will say the PTA meeting was always fun because it's, we have wonderful parents and they do, that's your school, I think, right?
My old school, my old PTA.
And their big celebration is the 30, 30-year anniversary.
Oh, of, of Southwood Glen, yeah.
And they have some nice plans for that, a birthday cake and.
That's fun.
And it's kind of special because that was, I was a parent when that school opened, so.
1998, I believe, right?
It was in the 90s, I don't remember exactly, but.
We could probably do math if we wanted, that doesn't add up.
No.
Anyway.
I continue to meet with Mr. Thompson and Dr. Mo and some other, some other people at the high school talking about, talking about internship opportunities for kids and streamlining that process. I feel like we're making a lot of progress. Dr. Mo, how do you feel about how the meetings are going so far? I know you.
I've, I've talked a lot and you've not talked very much at all.
It's a good group.
I mean, tonight.
Oh, no, it's a good group. I'm happy, Mr. Thompson, it's the right size group, I feel like we moved things forward, there's enough voices at the table, but not too many. So it's a nice mix to spot check things, I think he's done a good job of that.
I feel like he's streamlined the process a little bit, he thinks both small and large. He's streamlined the process a bit for next year, but he's also gotten more opportunities for kids. Certainly some in the, in Grace Bar's group of transitional kids as well. And so I think, really excited about the work that he's doing and that, that's going on there. Anybody else have any board liaison reports? All right, community engagement reports, I got to go to the band.
Festival of bands.
Festival of bands, thank you, at the middle school. I came, I think it started at four o'clock, I came about 5:02 and I parked almost as far away as I live.
Wow.
The, the, the gym was full and it was nice to see all those kids. And it was a successful, it seems like it was a successful event, so.
The gym at the middle school?
The gym at the middle.
Gym at the middle school. Just the number of students, there are almost 350 students in six 12 bands. So they were all there for performing. And then if each one brought, you know, one, two, or in some cases, six to eight people with them to watch the concert. There was, it was quite the crowd. I can, I can say there was a line out the door waiting to get in. I was getting texts from my husband who was outside saying, could you please let us in? It was, it was a really well-received event and a really great celebration of everything and the progression from a sixth grade musician to a high school musician. So some great concerts pre-Christmas as well, you know, pre-break as well, going back a few weeks.
I also got to drive the basketball team to, to Oak Creek.
Oh, fun.
And the girls broke Oak Creek's 135-game conference win streak.
Probably because you drove them.
Oh, it's totally about the bus driver.
I don't think so.
Playlist you had going.
I don't think so. And the boys did not do it quite as well.
Okay, well then.
So anyway, it's nice to go to some of those events. Anybody else, community engagement reports? Thank you. School board member comments.
Well, I'd like to thank Mr. Anderson for your hard work and diligence and your stick-to-itiveness because I know that this has been going on for a long time. So thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Cromie, for gathering all that information. I really appreciate it. Makes, making a decision much easier when we're fully informed.
I'd like to, maybe one of the board meetings bring to the agenda, the greeting. I have met with Mr. Vuiler twice on the, adjusting the greeting in the high school. So maybe if we can, you know.
That's something that I'm going to be working with Mr. Blessington on as part of my, because that's a teaching and learning area. So we will be coming to the board at some point this year with, this year, is that safe to say?
Yeah, it's, right now, it's earmarking, I think, for the first March meeting.
Yeah, with that policy to discuss.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, future agenda items, Pleasant View Elementary School presentation, open enrollment seats, communications update, district administrator evaluation are all the next meeting. And FPMS FLL presentation, 21, 22 audit results, state convention reports, at-risk status update, and 23, 24 preliminary budget will likely be in February, in the first meeting in February.
Are we doing a board evaluation or?
Well, we're going to do it later, but we need to, if anybody has any ideas on, on more effective board evaluation, I'm all ears.
Let's work together on that one.
State convention's next week, so maybe we'll find a session that.
That's a great idea.
Is in that area.
Ask the people you're sitting next to.
Mm-hmm. Good networking opportunity.
And I will be presenting at the convention at 1:45 on Thursday. Mr. Cromie will also be presenting in a different room at 1:45 on Thursday.
Oh, no.
Somehow they had to do it at the same time.
Come on, how can we choose?
I've got a lot more hair than him, but his will probably be far more interesting.
We'll arm wrestle for it and figure it out.
Oh, boy, that doesn't sound good either for me. Dr. Cohen, Dr. Cohen and Dr. Vuiler will also be presenting if that helps your choice.
What do you think so you got?
Legislative advocacy.
Mr. Crom.
Yeah, what do you?
Equity in school funding, really around the student lens versus the district to district lens.
All right, thank you, everyone. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.